Have you been volunteering? Oh, you want to do it?
(laughing)
You guess what you asked?
Um, so I haven't followed anything.
You don't know any of this? Well, I read it. Or skimmed it.
These people follow.
Oh, I don't know.
Yeah. So... Uh, it's a big source of batteries, yes.
It's natural.
It's a storage ring for electrons and moving bulk within speed. Um, I'm about to size this up. Electrons, any charged particles, it's all radiation. It's like... So, well, this is the light, the light area. Probably much more.
Natural.
Well, I don't know if natural.
Well, you know what I mean.
Yes.
That's interesting. So, what do you just feel it's not like a football player where it's smashing the part of it.
That's right, but it is a storage ring. And, uh, so the, so the batteries that are available have grown up for me. One of the three things that actually matters is that. So, uh, it's a lot of... So, that's it. I don't know that that's anything for the environment necessarily.
Oh, yeah. But you're not, but you're...
If everyone could please take a seat. The hundredth person just walked in the door. And I'd also like to thank the fine custodian staff at Dover Sherburne Regional High School for my emergency gown. Which is a block of wood with these here. Thank you. A quorum of a hundred being present. Children's two hundred and thirty-sixth annual meeting will come to order. Much auditorium was not available to us this year for our usual Tuesday, Thursday evenings in April. So, we are returning to our agricultural past and experimenting with a Saturday meeting. My objective is always to move the proceedings along as fairly and efficiently as possible, but today I ask that everyone be especially concise and avoids repetition. As my predecessor wisely counseled, once something's been said, everyone else doesn't have to repeat it. So, let's complete our business before we're all frazzled. The town clerk, Carol Marple, confirms that the warrant was properly posted by the town constables and that the tellers for today's meeting have all been sworn in. I'd like to begin with a couple of reminders before we hear from the Board of Selectmen and the Advisory Committee with their reports. First of all, if you have to leave the auditorium for any reason, you must leave through this door to my left, your right, and leave your ballot with the check-in official at the door. If you plan to return, please ask for a pass to reclaim your ballot when you re-enter the auditorium, and this applies to everyone. Secondly, a new thing this year, a TV monitor is set up in the cafeteria, and it will serve two purposes today. First of all, if anyone here has difficulty hearing against the ambient noise in the auditorium, they will be able to go out into the cafeteria and sit quite close to the TV in a quieter setting so that they can follow the proceedings. And second, we will not be adjourning for lunch. Food is not permitted in this auditorium, and if you brought snack or a lunch, you're also going to have to step out into the audit, into the cafeteria to eat it, and you will be able to follow the proceedings while you're out of the auditorium. However, in both cases, you're going to have to do the check-in and checkout procedure, and if you care to participate in the debate and our vote, you need to return to the auditorium to do that. I would also ask that you set your cellphones and PDAs on the courtesy mode, and please leave the auditorium if you decide to make a call. Do not sit in the aisles, particularly in the rear of the auditorium, and as always, non-voters are welcome at Town Meeting, but visitors must sit in the non-voters visitor section, which I believe is in the balcony to my right. I'd like to point out who is sitting on the stage today for those of you who are new to Town Meeting. On your left is the Advisory Committee, beginning with Chairperson Mike, Mark Brandon next to me, then Vice Chairperson Mary Wolf, then Lanny Rubin, Jeff Rudin, Russ Pollack, Eric Siri, George Pucci, Vicki Relis, and Ben Williams. And to your right, we have Barber Council, Barber Council. I would blame this on it's late, but it's not. Town Council, Barbara San Andre, then the town clerk, Carol Marple, then Selectman Paul Durensis and Peter Caruso, and then our Selectman Office staffer, Diane Morris, and on the end is a welcome to our new town administrator, David Williams. We will hear brief reports from the Board of Selectmen and the Advisory Committee, then following their reports, I'll review the rules of the road for the conduct of this meeting, and we can begin with Article One. Selectman Vice Chairperson Paul Durensis will report in place of Chairman Twining. Paul?
Thank you. Good morning. Thanks for coming. Every year, the chairman of the Board of Selectmen delivers a state-of-the-town report. Today, I'm going to read Chairman Tom Twining's report on behalf of Tom Twining. He had written this report and had planned on delivering it himself, but he can't be here with us. He is unable to be here due to his serious health challenges. He remains in intensive care. I'd like to take this opportunity to recognize Tom for his dedicated service to Sherburne and to the Board of Selectmen. Thank you, Tom. Here, then, is Tom's state-of-the-town report. A few announcements are in order first. I think it has been a year of unprecedented change for Sherburne. We have welcomed a new Selectman to the Board, Peter Caruso, and a new town administrator, David Williams, to our ranks. I think Cory has introduced him, but there he is at the end of the table. Selectman Caruso's focus on balance sheet matters and administrative, Administrator Williams' skills and depth of experience will surely change the face of Sherburne's government going forward, especially given the critical and key role envisioned for the town administrator envisioned by both Collins and Department of Revenue. Further, due to illness, I, Tom Twining, have withdrawn from reelection, and so we will welcome yet another Selectman to the Board, Michael Giamo, who will take my seat for the upcoming term. That's a lot of change for one year. Now, let's look at the town's financial condition. Although Sherburne remains in the grip of an achingly slow economic recovery, we are proud to report that we have come through this year in good shape. As in past years, there is no oper, no operating override this Our free cash in the treasury of the town, which is the amount left over above and beyond what we have spent last year, is up thirty-three percent over last year. A nice rebound and proof of good management of the town. At the close of the last fiscal year, according to our recently issued financial statements, the total assets of the town have grown by a quarter of a million dollars, now totaling twenty-seven million forty-three dollars, forty-three thousand nine hundred and thirteen dollars. Those are the amount by which our assets exceed our liabilities. At the close of last fiscal year, the financial statements show that governmental funds combined ending balances are a hundred thousand dollars more in compare, in comparison to the prior year. We have more money in the bank. At the end of the current fiscal year, unassigned fund balance for the general fund was nearly a half a million dollars more in comparison to the prior year. Our total long-term debt, what we owe in our bonds, at the close of the fiscal year reported in the financial statements, was more than a million dollars less than the prior year, meaning we have less debt. So, if you put the overall picture together, we have more assets, we have more cash, and we have less debt. The Board of Selectmen has actively been managing expenditures carefully, has been looking for new revenues, and has been seeking to cut costs. Last year, as both the Department of Revenue and Collins Center Management reports were completed, the Board of Selectmen engaged an interim town administrator, Jim Purcell, to build an independent and objective roadmap for the implementation of their conclusions, out of which, amongst other things, emerged new sets of procedures and guidelines defining the relationship between the Selectman and the proposed strong town administrator that lay at the heart of both the Collins and the DOR reports. During that process, I, which is Tom Twining, I'm reading Tom Twining's remarks, during that process, I again urged the Board to retain the Collins Center to professionally recruit our permanent new town administrator in order to fully professionalize that process and bring new objectivity to the choice of town administrator as never before. We now have a professionally recruited town administrator, David Williams, who joined us in 2013, who will be working with the Selectmen at this year's town meeting to put in place some of the initiatives that Collins and the DOR have suggested. For the future, the Board is working on changes that will put the town administrator at the center of the budget process. When we get to Article Twenty-Three of this warrant, you will hear more of our hopes for reforming government towards a strong town administrator. Selectman Caruso will have a presentation for us at that time. On the public safety side, Sherburne continues to be served by superb public safety and public infrastructure services. Our police department, under the expert leadership of Chief Richard Thompson, has not only filled some key positions in our department, but has also initiated an innovative new scheduling system designed to reduce our overtime expenses. Our fire chief, Neil McPherson, is aggressively in the process of recruiting a full-time chief in order to optimize our fire rescue expenses and revenues, as well as position the department for the future. Our community maintenance and development services continue to improve under the close attention of Ed Wagner, to whom our hearts go out for the hardships he and his family have endured this year. We could not have achieved all that we have achieved without the dedicated support of many volunteers on our town boards and our committees and our hard-working employees. To all of you, I say thanks. Sherburne has always supported its own, and despite a mighty pace of events, this year was no exception. Great kindness was shown by all, and those in need were embraced and cared for in exemplary fashion. That, in fact, is the heart of Sherburne, and that is why so many of us serve, in whatever capacity, whenever we are needed. I'd like to reach out to everyone in town with whom I agree and with whom I have disagreed. And ask you to see us all as one community of neighbors and Let's disagree less over self-interest and agree more on our shared future. From what I've seen this year, I bet we can do it. Thank you, Tom Twining.
Thank you, Paul. And now we'll hear from Chairperson Mark Brandon of the Advisory Committee.
Thanks, Cory. I think the rest of the Advisory Committee will join me in keeping Tom and his family and our thoughts and prayers and wishing him a speedy recovery. The, uh, the warrant can be a daunting document. It's, uh, it's full of some fairly dense and obscure language, and for any of us, it can be easier to focus on those few articles or budget lines that are of personal interest. Different people will value different departments' contributions to our community and feel that some capital project is more worthy than another. It's understandable that sometimes the town's spending forest can get lost for the individual budget or project trees. Lord knows we love our trees in Sherburne. To help focus the discussion, the Advisory Committee is tasked by you, the residents of Sherburne, to weigh through the entire warrant and do two things. First, weigh each budget line, capital request, and bylaw change on their own merits. And second, recommend the trade-offs necessary to achieve a balanced whole. As many of you know, this process produces a certain amount of tension for all concerned, and the town has wisely, and I think as I come up on the end of my second term, compassionately imposed term limits for members of the Advisory Committee. Do advisories' recommendations add up to a balanced whole? On the operating budget side, I think that most, if not all of us up here at the table, are feeling much more positive about the state of Sherburne's finances than we did two or three years ago. For the first time in many years, our cash reserves have risen rather than fallen. The budget we propose uses about ninety-six thousand dollars of reserves to close the gap between revenues and spending. While many of us would like to obviously see this number zero, we think this is a manageable amount and continues the trend of less reliance on reserves to cover our spending. Having established a little more breathing space, we are recommending favorable action on quite a number of capital items. For the most part, these projects are needed to maintain public safety services at required levels or to keep our town and school buildings in basic food repair. The one large project that's of a more elective nature is the air conditioning of the middle school. In this case, we believe there are compelling reasons to proceed and have also recommended favorable action. There are also a number of bylaw articles, several of which relate to a proposed development of the Peace Abbey site with over fifty-five housing. Many of us believe that this proposed development ticks all of the boxes on Sherburne's list of things that we would like to see happen on that site, and along with bringing the additional benefit of some significant new property tax revenue. We recommend favorable action on these articles so that this exciting project can move forward. I would be remiss if I did not mention the two ongoing concerns we raised in our report to you. Both of these concerns relate to the wage and benefit costs of the people who provide services to the town. The relentless annual increases in health insurance costs dominate the news, and this important employee benefit is a major expense for Sherburne. The budget that we ask you to approve reflects an eleven percent increase, which about half is attributable to the rate increase and about half is attributable to increased participation by employees. However, even if participation stays flat, five to nine percent increases are very likely going forward, and these rates are much higher than Sherburne's anticipated growth in revenues. Secondly, our biggest single expense by far is the wages we pay to the towns and the region's employees. This year, once we allocated revenue for health insurance for our existing employees and a relatively small amount for our health insurance obligation to retired employees, we were left with only one percent to distribute to departments for all other increases. There are, there are good reasons to plan on a similar level for at least the next few years, and so to keep a sustainable financial structure, Sherburne's leaders will have to ensure that total wages, and I'm not just talking about coal is here, do not rise faster than that one percent or so. To wrap up, we encourage you to accept our recommendations. Your Advisory Committee has worked hard to present you with that balanced whole I referred to earlier. Nonetheless, even harder work is done by the Board of Selectmen, the Sherburne and Regional School Committees, and all the other officials and employees who have to actually make the decisions and do the things that are planned within this budget, and for that, we say thank you.
Thank you, Mark. I'd like to begin by reviewing some of our parliamentary procedures today. They reflect state statute, local bylaw, best practices of the Massachusetts Moderators Association, which has published this lively little book entitled, Town Meeting Time: A Handbook of Parliamentary Law, which I read every April, and also Local Tradition. The agenda for tonight's meeting is the warrant. A copy is mailed to every household, and I hope that you've brought your copy with you today. We have this year, for the first time, the Advisory Committee has prepared some slides which will help keep you on track with the title and a quick summary of the content of all of the articles. A motion must be made to put an agenda item before consideration of the meeting. I will recognize a member of the Advisory Committee to make all of the initiating main motions. If you wish to speak on a motion, you must ask the moderator to be recognized. To save time, I ask that you already stand at one of the microphones, there is one here in the front and one in the rear, and wait to be recognized by me. Once I do so, please state your name and address first, and then make your comments. Your comments must be relevant to the motion, the traditional phrase is, "within its four corners," and limited to two minutes. I will not recognize a speaker a second time unless all others who wish to speak have had an opportunity to do so. If you do make a second comment, it should contain new information and not restate what you have already said. Because thorough presentations can help debate, I will allow up to five minutes for presenters who have filed with me a request form to make such a presentation. And we have a timekeeper sitting in the front row this evening, who, today, sorry, who will raise a red card. Can we have a show of the red card, please? Whoops. Thank you. Who will raise a red card when your allotted time is up? Because we have a very full agenda, I tend to be firm in observing time limits, and I hope you will understand if I interrupt you when your time is up. Better yet, if you see the red card, stop yourself. All alternate main motions and amendments to a main motion must be submitted in writing to the town clerk, who has forms for that purpose, and no more than two amendments may be on the floor at the same time. A vote is first taken on the amendments and then on the main motion. Sometimes the main motion made by advisory is a negative motion. It is a motion to take no action. A negative motion must be defeated before an affirmative motion can be put before town meeting, and I will discuss this more fully when that situation arises. Our normal procedure is to use a voice vote on all motions. We will have a count of hands by the tellers if the vote is not clear to me, or if seven voters question the decision immediately after it is declared. On motions requiring a two-thirds majority, we will try for a unanimous voice vote. If the vote, voice vote is not unanimous but is clearly two-thirds, under Sherburne's bylaws, the moderator may declare that the motion has been adopted by at least two-thirds of those voting. Again, if it's not clear to me, or if seven voters challenge the vote immediately after it has been declared, we will have a count of hands by the tellers. And on any issue, fifty voters may request a vote by secret ballot. And the last procedural point is that I will only read the titles of the articles printed in your Advisory Committee report, and you can also refer to the screen. If at any time you would like to have the text of a motion reread, please ask, and we will do so. And finally, a reminder, echoing the comments that were read from Tom Twining, political discourse can be cantankerous, but today in this place, we gather to promote the common goal of all Sherman, Sherburne citizens. I remind you to speak with respect and civility. Personal remarks or speculation about others' motives are always out of order, and today we may disagree and agree, but tomorrow we'll still be friends and neighbors. So, let's begin with Article One of the warrant.
Ms. Moderator?
Yes?
Uh, it has come to our attention that there are two corrections regarding the annual report. First is a correction to the Farm Pond Advisory Report, and one name was omitted, which is Ellen F. Heffron, the associate member whose term expires in June of 2013. And the other correction is the Wage and Salary Report, where last year's report was inadvertently inserted in the handout at the town meeting. inserted in the handout at the town meeting as the correct numbers. So I move that the reports of the town officers and committees as contained in the annual report be accepted with the corrections in the handout distributed at this town meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. Article Two, Unpaid Bills.
Ms. Moderator.
Yes.
I move that the sum of one thousand one hundred and seventeen dollars and fifteen cents be transferred from free cash to the treasury of the town for the purpose of paying bills from Ruane &amp; Father, five hundred and twenty-eight dollars, UniFirst, thirty-five dollars and twenty-eight cents, N-Star Electric, twenty-nine dollars and fifty-four cents, Verizon, sixty-two dollars and fifty-six cents, Information Networks, two hundred and fifty dollars, and Staples, two hundred and eleven dollars and seventy-seven cents, dated fiscal year 2012.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? If not, this will require, incidentally by law, a four-fifths vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Passes unanimously. Article Three is the Omnibus Budget.
Ms. Moderator.
Yes.
I move that the numbered items appearing in the advisory committee's fiscal year 2014 omnibus budget and the amount indicated in the column under the heading "Recommended FY 2014" be called over by the moderator, and if no objection is made, that such amounts be raised and appropriated for the purpose specified, except that where a transfer is indicated by a numbered footnote, that the specified amount shall be provided by such transfer, that the salaries for the various town offices, including those indicated by numbered footnotes, be fixed effective July 1, 2013, as specified in the omnibus budget that becomes effective pursuant to this motion, and that any item to which objection is made be separately considered and disposed of in accordance with the vote of the town.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. I will read over the lines of the omnibus budget. If you wish to have any debate or ask any questions on any of these lines, please call out "hold." At the end, we will vote on those items which were not held, and then we will return to the held lines, line by line. Boy, next year I'm going to need new glasses. Our first line in general government is selectman salaries, two hundred and thirty-eight thousand one hundred and fifty-six dollars. Selectman expenses, twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and sixty-three dollars. Legal counsel, sixty-five thousand. Solid waste expenses, two hundred and fifty-nine thousand five hundred and eighty-six. Assessor salaries, one hundred and one thousand one hundred and seventy-six dollars. Assessor's expenses, thirteen thousand two hundred and seventy-five. Treasurer salaries, ninety-nine thousand two hundred and fifty-four dollars. Treasurer expenses, twenty-two thousand eight hundred and three. Tax collectors' salaries, ninety-four thousand seven fifteen. Tax collectors' expenses, nineteen thousand five hundred and fifty-two. Accountant salaries, ninety-four thousand six hundred and six dollars. Accountant expenses, nineteen thousand sixteen. Accountant annual audit, twenty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Advisory salaries, four hundred and fifty-five dollars. Advisory expenses, three thousand four hundred and ninety-five dollars. Planning board salaries, sixty-thousand, oh, I beg your pardon, forty thousand two dollars. Planning board expenses, one thousand five hundred and forty. Town clerk salaries, eighty-five thousand three hundred and thirty-two. Town clerk expenses, five thousand two hundred and four. Election salaries, twenty-nine thousand one hundred and twenty-four. Election expenses, twelve thousand three hundred and two. Town buildings expenses, two hundred and eleven thousand eight hundred and twenty-nine. The police department salaries, one million two hundred and seventy-one thousand eight hundred and forty-nine dollars. Police expenses, eighty-one thousand six hundred and fifty. Police cruisers, thirty-four thousand. Fire and rescue salaries, three hundred and fifty-five thousand seventy-eight. Fire and rescue expenses, ninety-four thousand one hundred and eighty. Building inspector salaries, sixty-eight thousand eight hundred and seventy-five. Building inspector expenses, three thousand four hundred. Dover Sherburne Regional Assessment, eight million five hundred and sixty-one thousand seven hundred and eighty-nine. Tri-County Vocational, thirty-nine thousand two hundred and eighty-two.
Hold.
Sherburne Schools, six million nine hundred and sixty-five thousand seven hundred and seventy. Norfolk Agricultural, ninety-two thousand seven hundred and eighty-two. CM&amp;D salaries, five hundred and fifty-one, five hundred and forty-one thousand nine hundred and forty-nine.
Hold.
CM&amp;D expenses, three hundred and thirty-two thousand two hundred and fifty-eight. Board of Health salaries, sixty-one thousand eight hundred and fifteen. Board of Health expenses, sixty-six thousand nine hundred and twenty-four. Library salaries, two hundred and sixty-five thousand three hundred and sixty-seven. Library expenses, one hundred and twenty-nine thousand twenty-two. Recreation expenses, nine thousand nine hundred and sixty-two. Farm Pond salaries, ninety thousand one hundred and forty-three. Farm Pond expenses, thirteen thousand four hundred and forty-one. Council on Aging salaries, ninety-nine thousand one hundred and eleven. Council on Aging expenses, twenty-two thousand nine hundred and fifty. Conservation salaries, forty-five thousand six hundred and fifty-one. Conservation expenses, four thousand two hundred and fifty-nine. Veterans expenses, seven thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. Historical commission, five hundred dollars. Recycling expenses, three thousand nine hundred and forty-two. Cemetery's expenses, forty-five thousand six hundred and seventy. Elderly housing expenses, one hundred and fifty-seven thousand eight hundred and ninety-four.
Hold.
General insurance, one hundred and sixty-six thousand eighty-eight. Employee benefits, one million nine hundred and ninety thousand nine hundred and sixty-two. OPEB, which is other...
Post-employment benefits.
Post-employment benefits. Thank you. One hundred thousand. Debt service total, one million four hundred and seventy-two thousand one hundred and thirty-six. Reserve account, sixty thousand. Just let me review. I have holds on Tri-County Vocational, CM&amp;D salaries, and elderly housing expenses. Were there any others that I missed?
Madam Moderator.
Yes.
I wonder if advisory wanted to hold CM&amp;D expenses. Weren't you flipping?
It's supplemental.
I thought you were trans... okay, never mind.
All right then, we will vote on the motion that's been made for the non-held items. Is there any debate before we vote? If not, all those in favor of the lines without holds, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. We will return to Tri-County Vocational.
Ms. Moderator.
Yes.
The number in the report was an original estimate provided to us...
Excuse me, would you like to make a motion first?
Sure. I move that line 302, Tri-County Vocational, that we allocate forty-two thousand seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars.
Thank you. Any comment?
I need a second.
Yes.
Second.
My comment is that the original number was given to us as an estimate early on in the budgeting process, and the Tri-County Board just voted their budget last week, and this is Sherburne's assessment, forty-two thousand seven hundred and twenty-nine.
Any other comments or questions? If not, all those in favor of the corrected number, forty-two thousand seven hundred and twenty-nine, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. CM&amp;D.
Ms. Moderator.
Yes.
I move that CM&amp;D salary line be changed to five hundred and forty-eight thousand and ninety-six dollars.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any debate? Yes, Mark.
Well, this is due to the completion of a new agreement with the CM&amp;D union. David would like to comment on that.
Excuse me, David.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Ma... I'm Madam Moderator, I'm sorry. The collective bargaining agreement approved by both the union and Board of Selectmen included a half percent increase on wages for the current year and one percent increase for next year.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? If not, it's been moved and seconded that the number five hundred and forty-eight thousand ninety-six for CM&amp;D salaries be approved. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. And our third hold was on elderly housing expenses.
Ms. Moderator.
Mr. Brandon.
I move that line 545, elderly housing expenses be changed to one hundred and fifty-six thousand six hundred and sixty dollars.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any debate, Mark?
The reason for this is that the budget for elderly housing must match the amount that's in the RFA, and so the current, the correct number is one fifty-six six sixty. We should also note that the footnote will also need to be changed.
Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor of approving one hundred and fifty-six thousand six hundred and sixty dollars in the elderly housing line, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to Article Four, Collective Bargaining.
Madam Moderator.
Yes.
I move that no action be taken.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that no action be taken. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. Article Five, Supplemental Budgets to the Current Fiscal Year 2012.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Siri.
I move that the sum of one hundred and sixty-eight thousand five hundred and thirteen dollars be funded by the overlay release, and that one hundred and thirty-six thousand one hundred and sixteen dollars be appropriated from free cash for the purposes of supplementing the fiscal year 2013 omnibus operating budget. The expense lines are as follows. Town clerk expenses, four thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars. Election and registration payroll, three thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars. Election and registration expenses, five thousand nine hundred and thirty-three dollars. Police overtime, forty-five thousand dollars. Debt service interest, twenty-one thousand seven hundred and eighty-six dollars. Snow and ice payroll, thirty thousand dollars. Snow and ice expenses, one hundred thousand dollars. Legal expenses, thirty thousand dollars. Employee benefits, fifty-five thousand dollars. Veterans, seven thousand five hundred dollars. Fire special detail, nine hundred dollars. And that sixty thousand dollars be transferred from 2013 CMD payroll to 2013 CMD expenses.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Motion passes. Article Six, Highway Funds.
Madam Moderator.
Yes, Mr. Brugi.
I move that the Board of Selectmen be authorized to apply for, accept, and expend any state aid for highway improvements made available to the town under authority of General Laws Chapter 90, and that any necessary borrowing in anticipation of such state aid be approved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any debate on this item? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. Article Seven, Revolving Funds.
Ms. Moderator.
Yes, Mr. Brandon.
Advisory will be making four separate motions under Article Seven.
Ms. Moderator.
Yes.
I move that the Council on Aging Revolving Fund be reauthorized pursuant to General Laws Chapter 44, Section 53 E and a Half, that the Council on Aging be authorized to spend up to thirty thousand dollars from the remaining funds and anticipated revenues in such revolving fund, without further appropriation for salaries, expenses, and contractual services required to operate transportation, meal, and special activity programs during fiscal year 2014, and that such revolving fund be credited with the balance remaining in such revolving fund at the end of fiscal year 2013, and with all fees and charges received during fiscal year 2014 from persons participating in Council on Aging programs.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Williams.
I move that the Board of Health Revolving Fund be reauthorized pursuant to General Laws Chapter 44, Section 53 E and a Half, that the Board of Health be authorized to spend up to five thousand dollars from the anticipated revenues in such revolving fund, without further appropriation, for salaries, expenses, and contractual services required to operate flu shot clinics during fiscal year 2014, and that such revolving fund be credited with all fees and charges received during fiscal year 2014 in connection with the conduct of flu shot clinics.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Madam Moderator.
Mrs. Wolf.
I move that the Recycling Committee Revolving Fund be authorized pursuant to General Laws Chapter 44, Section 53 E and a Half, that the Recycling Committee be authorized to spend up to two thousand dollars from the anticipated revenues in such revolving fund, without further appropriation, for expenses and contractual services required to operate a program to sell composting bins during fiscal year 2014, and that such revolving fund be credited with all fees and charges received during fiscal year 2014 in connection with the sale of composting bins.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Passes unanimously.
Ms. Moderator.
Mr. Rubin.
I move that the Town Forest Committee Revolving Fund be authorized pursuant to General Laws Chapter 44, Section 53 E and a Half, that the Town Forest Committee be authorized to spend up to ten thousand dollars from the anticipated revenues in such revolving fund, without further appropriation, for expenses and contractual services required to operate a program to sell firewood during fiscal year 2014, and that such revolving fund be credited with all fees and charges received during fiscal year 2014 in connection with the sale of firewood.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. Article Eight, Capital Expenditures.
Ms. Moderator.
Yes.
I move that the sum of forty thousand dollars be appropriated to purchase a new fire department command vehicle, and that, to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of Board of Selectmen, shall be authorized to borrow forty thousand dollars pursuant to General Laws Chapter 44, Section 7, Prens 9, or any other applicable statute, provided, however, that this appropriation shall not take effect until the town votes to exempt from the limitation on total taxes imposed by General Laws Chapter 59, Section 21(c), Prens K, Proposition 2 and a Half, the amounts required to pay the principal and interest on the bonds and notes authorized by this vote.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Question one.
On the command vehicle, yes.
Any other?
No, we're just doing line one right now.
Line one.
Which is the command vehicle. Elliot?
Elliot Taylor, 30 North Main Street. I'll be voting no on most of the items in protest over a party that's going to be held at the Sherburne Inn at the end of this month. This party is illegal. It was voted by the Planning Board and the Zoning Board of Appeals that they could have this party over my objections, and twenty-five years ago, the Town of Sherburne Town Meeting voted, there'll be no outdoor entertainment at any Sherburne restaurant. This is back when the Sherburne Inn was trying to get their approvals so that they could start their operation, and one of the things was, there'll be no outdoor entertainment at any Sherburne restaurant.
Thank you.
Last year, I protested this.
Thank you, Elliot. Thank you.
I have more to say. And so...
Excuse me, Mr. Taylor, I'm sorry.
I'll be voting no on this.
Debate is irrelevant to the article.
And God help.
Thank you. Any other debate? If not, this requires a two-thirds vote because it's a borrowing, so we'll give it a shot. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Motion passes.
Madam Moderator.
Two-thirds vote?
Oh.
By two-thirds vote.
Oh, by two-thirds vote, I beg your pardon. Line two, the Fire Department Computer Service.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Pollak.
I move that the sum of $5,500 be appropriated to purchase and install a new computer server for the Fire Department, and that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen shall be authorized to borrow $5,500 pursuant to General Laws Chapter 44, Section 7, Paragraph 9, or any other applicable statute pursuant, however, that this appropriation shall not take effect until the town votes to exempt from the limitation on total taxes imposed by the General Laws Chapter 59, Section 21C, Paragraph K, Proposition 2 and a Half, the amounts required to pay the principal and interest on the bonds and notes authorized by this vote.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any debate on this motion? If not, we will take a voice vote, this also requires a two-thirds majority. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Passes by two-thirds. Line three, HVAC Replacement in the Fire Station.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Siri.
I move that the sum of $153,700 be appropriated for the purchase and installation of a new HVAC system, and to make energy efficiency improvements at Fire Station Number One. And that, to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen be authorized to borrow $153,700 pursuant to General Laws Chapter 44, Section 7, Parenthesis 3A, Parenthesis 3B, Parenthesis 9, or any other applicable statute, provided, however, that this appropriation shall not take effect until the town votes to exempt from the limitation on total taxes imposed by General Laws Chapter 59, Section 21C, Parenthesis K, Proposition 2 and a Half, the amounts required to pay the principal and interest on the bonds and notes authorized by this vote. Second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any debate on this item? If not, we'll go to the voice vote. Once again, a two-thirds vote is needed to pass. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Motion passes by two-thirds. Line four, Solar Powered Pedestrian Crossing Light.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Pucci.
I move that the sum of $10,075 be appropriated to purchase and install a solar powered pedestrian activated crossing signal on North Main Street, and that the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen shall be authorized to borrow $10,075 pursuant to General Laws Chapter 44, Section 714, or any other applicable statute, provided however that this appropriation shall not, not take effect until the town votes to exempt from the limitation on total taxes imposed by the General Laws Chapter 59, Section 21CK, Proposition 2 and a Half, the amounts required to pay the principal and interest on the bonds and notes authorized by this vote.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, is there any debate? Yes, Elliot.
This is a pedestrian light by the fire station?
Yes, I believe so.
Is that correct? I think it's unnecessary. I think this money would be better spent getting the air conditioning system in the town hall corrected. I've been complaining about the noisy ventilators there from day one that we moved in there about eight years ago, and I think this money should be spent for that purpose. I think this is unnecessary.
Is there any other debate? If not, we'll proceed to the vote, this once again requires two-thirds for passage. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Motion passes by two-thirds. Line five, is the CM and D Dump Truck. Madam Moderator. Ms. Releas.
I move that the sum of $60,000 be appropriated for the purchase of a dump truck for the Community Maintenance and Development Department, and that the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen shall be authorized to borrow $60,000 pursuant to General Laws Chapter 44, Section 79, or any other applicable statute, provided however that this appropriation shall not take effect until the town votes to exempt from the limitation on total taxes imposed by the General Laws Chapter 59, Section 21CK, Proposition 2 and a Half, the amounts required to pay the principal and interest on the bonds and notes authorized by this vote.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any debate? If not, we'll proceed to the voice vote, once again, two-thirds for passage. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Motion passes by two-thirds.
Madam Moderator.
Yes, line six, the CM and D Pickup Truck, Mr. Williams.
I move that the sum of $30,000 be appropriated for the purchase of a pickup truck for the Community Maintenance and Development Department, and that the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen shall be authorized to borrow $30,000 pursuant to General Laws Chapter 44, Section 7, Paragraph 9, or any other applicable statute, provided however that this appropriation shall not take effect until the town votes to exempt from the limitation on total taxes imposed by the General Laws Chapter 59, Section 21C, Paragraph K, also known as Proposition 2 and a Half, the amounts required to pay the principal and interest on the bonds and notes authorized by this vote.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, is there any debate? If not, once again, this is a two-thirds vote for passage. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Motion passes by two-thirds. Line seven, Asphalt Overlay of Transfer Station Fencing and Containers.
Ms. Moderator.
Ms. Wolf.
I move that the sum of $80,000 be appropriated to install an asphalt overlay and purchase and install fencing and containers at the transfer station, and that the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen shall be authorized to borrow $80,000 pursuant to General Laws Chapter 44, Section 734, or any other applicable statute, provided, however, that this appropriation shall not take effect until the town votes to exempt from the limitation on total taxes imposed by the General Laws Chapter 59, Section 21CK, Proposition 2 and a Half, the amounts required to pay the principal and interest on the bonds and notes authorized by this vote.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, I understand that Carol Rubenstein of the Recycling Committee is going to make a less than five-minute presentation. Carol.
I'm Carol Rubenstein from the Recycling Committee, 57 Old Field Drive. And I do have members of the Recycling Committee here who are making their way down to the front. But I will get started. Oh, before I get started, I would really be interested to see a show of hands, how many of you use the transfer station to drop off your trash and recycling? Okay, thank you. I'd like, I'd like to start with this slide, I tried to fit in a summary of the improvements at the transfer station since it was first built in 1986, and to show you what the town has spent from property taxes to change things around and make improvements, and what was done with money other than property tax money. I don't have time to go over everything, but grant money was used to build the original swap shop, grant money was used to build the new office shelter, grant money was used for the original compartmentalized recycling containers with the platform and the waste, the new waste oil tank. And so, over a period of... Over 27 years, the town has spent only $46,011.58 in property taxes to upgrade and improve the infrastructure. No money has ever been planned or allocated for road surface maintenance beyond CM and D patching, and instead, the town has deferred maintenance of the infrastructure, apparently expecting that these systems are going to operate with no additional investment. Very little has been allocated in the operating budget for maintenance or for new investment, resulting in minor repairs instead of meaningful ones. Just to contrast, I'd like to point out that $22,342.71 was earned in fiscal year 12 alone from revenue from recycling vendors, that is, books, textiles, papers, and scrap metal. I'm not talking about fees. Can't figure out how to advance these slides. Okay, so, the repaving problem is pictured here, you see lots of potholes, and sometimes there are potholes that have been patched and repatched. Trading. Here we have the crumbling pavement up at the top where people are often losing their footing, we have people who get out of their cars at various distances from the disposal area, and it's sometimes hard for them to have firm footing. Do you want to try this, Rochelle? And then we have, this slide shows us the constraints that we have on both, on all three sides, we have the hill up at the top, the wetlands on both sides. So, we've considered halfway measures, patching the potholes again, but they really don't last, it's a constant struggle to stay ahead of them, and there was some discussion of overlaying only one section, but there's no agreement on which section was most in need of repair. Okay, next. Yeah, let's see, it's keep changing. So, we have bids from two companies, they're pretty close together, they both proposed the same one-inch leveling course followed by a two-inch overlay. We can't apply for Chapter 90 funds, this is not considered a road, it's a driveway. Okay. Then we have the fence, these are outside the gate, you see the holes in the fence, anybody could get in if they wanted to. I wish I had time for a funny story, but I can't, I don't have time. Here's another hole inside. Here's out on Route 27. So, statutory language indicates that a fence is required to prevent access except at the gate and to shield a site from neighbors, and I've been told that since the transfer station was built originally with a fence along Route 27, it was probably required in the original site assignment. So, we thought that maybe we could do just one portion, either inside or outside, which was why we had the estimates broken out, but apparently we have to do both, so that's why we have the total the way it is. The container, here is one container that dates back from landfill days, you can see on the right-hand side, the floor is rusting out. Okay, next.
Carol, I'm, you can't see the card behind you, but you've hit your five-minute deadline, you want to make your last...
Oh, I'm sorry.
...slide? Wind it up?
Okay, so, the containers cost, a new one is barely as much more than a refurbished old one, and an old one not refurbished is not reasonable, so I would recommend that we get five new, brand-new ones for very little more than five refurbished ones. And that's my, my presentation, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other debate? If not, we will proceed to the vote, once again, this is a borrowing, and will require a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Passes by two-thirds. And could somebody unblind me? Thank you. Line eight, Communications Equipment.
Madam Moderator.
Yes, Mr. Rubin.
I move that the sum of $110,000 be appropriated to purchase public safety communications equipment, and that the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen shall be authorized to borrow $104,000 pursuant to General Laws Chapter 44, Section 7, Parenthesis 9, or any other applicable statute, provided however that this appropriation shall not take effect until the town votes to exempt from the limitation on total taxes imposed by the General Laws Chapter 59, Section 21CK, Proposition 2 and a Half, the amounts required to pay the principal and interest on the bonds and notes authorized by this vote, and that $6,000 be transferred from free cash to expedite installation in the most cost-effective manner. Second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any further debate? If not, this is once again a two-thirds motion to pass. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. Line nine, the Pine Hill Emergency Access Road.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Rubin.
I move that the sum of $80,000 be appropriated for construction of an emergency access road at the Pine Hill School, and that the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen shall be authorized to borrow $80,000 pursuant to General Laws Chapter 44, Section 7, Prince 34, or any other applicable statute, provided however that this appropriation shall not take effect until the town votes to exempt from the limitation on total taxes imposed by General Laws Chapter 59, Section 21CK, Proposition 2 and a Half, the amounts required to pay the principal and interest on the bonds and notes authorized by this vote.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Do I understand that there is this brief presentation?
Nope.
There is, apparently not. Is there any other debate? Yes, Mr. Johnson.
Robert Johnson, 272 Western Avenue. I just want to remind the town that this is not a permanent solution, this is a sort of temporary makeshift solution. Thank you.
If there are no other comments, we will proceed to the vote, once again, this is two-thirds to pass. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes by two-thirds. Line 10, Capital Needs for Pine Hill School.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Siri.
I move that the sum of $310,144 be appropriated for various items of capital equipment and improvement to Pine Hill School, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and that the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen shall be authorized to borrow $310,144 pursuant to General Laws Chapter 44, Section 7, Parenthesis 3A, Parenthesis 9, or any other applicable statute, exempt from the limitation on total taxes improved, imposed by General Laws Chapter 59, Section 21CK, Proposition 2 and a Half, the amounts required to pay the principal and interest on the bonds and notes authorized by this vote. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Frank, do I understand that you, you had requested time for a presentation, no longer than five minutes?
Thank you. Good morning, Frank Hess, 64 South Main Street. The Sherbin School Committee and the Pine Hill School Building Committee have a request for capital funds to support the physical infrastructure at Pine Hill School. We formed this present request based on meetings with the Capital Budget Committee during this process last year. Last year, we had developed our own five-year projection of needs and a one-year request for things that were basically already broken. The Sherbin Capital Budget Committee suggested that we map out our capital needs for at least 10 years, and that the next year, we come back with a more comprehensive plan and request that would cover a five-year period in a more measured, planned manner. We proceeded to follow their advice, and the school committee commissioned a professionally-done plan that covers a 20-year period. Some of us were surprised that the plan did not come back with an end-of-life projection or suggestion for the school. You've got a chance to see the tape of the meeting with the company representative gave his report, you can see he was specifically asked if he had an end-of-life, useful life projection for the school, and his response was, and I quote, "The school's been well-maintained, it could be used for another 20, 30, or perhaps 40 years." twenty, thirty, or perhaps forty years if it is well-maintained," end quote. He went on to say that if size needs changed, or if the format for the classrooms changed, then you might look at a replacement at some point in time. Parts of this school are about fifty-five years old, and there have been two additions and some renovations. As with any building, it takes continual renewal to keep nature from returning into its natural state of a pile of dust. The twenty-year plan can be viewed as a plan for a rolling renovation. It's a more measured, need-based plan over time rather than a list everything now whether we need it or not way of doing business. The capital needs listed are related to student safety, student health, energy efficiency, and suitability for learning. We have the type of learning outcomes that most communities would love to have. We have to be proactive to continue to provide the type of learning atmosphere that will allow our children to continue to thrive. Without attention, it would be easy for a fifty-five-year-old building to slip into shabbiness, to be in a situation where there was interruption of educational services, to have situations where the protection of student health and safety is not all it could be. When a new family considers coming to Sherwin, the school is one of the places they visit to evaluate their choices. It is necessary that the school reflect the values and pride of the town. If we look at the twenty-year projected costs, we might wonder how they would compare if the school were new. For the first five to ten years, hopefully, capital costs would be less, but then we would be back in the business of renewal again. The same study was done in Dover. If we compare our twenty-year projected costs to Dover's, we find they are about the same. The Chikling School is about twelve years old. We look at the long-term projected costs for Pine Hill School, and think about this cost giving us a twenty-year useful life, without having to pay our share of a twenty-five to thirty million dollar new school, it starts to look like a pretty good deal. At the suggestion advisory and the selectmen, we have crafted a one-year request and a scheduled continuing support with the Capital Budget Committee. The one-year request is for three hundred and ten thousand, one hundred and forty-four dollars. We have listed the areas to be addressed this year on the orange handout that most of you received. Please vote yes on this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any debate on this question? If not, I'm sorry, I thought the person in the back was approaching the mic, but no. If not, we'll proceed to the vote. Once again, this is a two-thirds vote for passage. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Motion passes by two-thirds. Line eleven, it's an engineering study of intersections at Woodland and Mill and Woodland and Golding West.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Cucci.
I move that the sum of twenty-one thousand dollars be appropriated for the planning and engineering of improvements to the intersections of Woodland Street and Mill Street and Woodland Street and Golding Street West, and that the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, shall be authorized to borrow twenty-one thousand dollars pursuant to General Laws, Chapter Forty-four, Section Seven, Twenty-two, or any other applicable statute, provided, however, that this appropriation shall not take effect until the town votes to accept, exempt from the limitation on total taxes imposed by the General Laws, Chapter Fifty-nine, Section Twenty-one CK, Proposition Two and a Half, the amounts required to pay the principal and interest on the bonds and notes authorized by this vote.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Yes, Elliot.
Very glad that you called that Golden West. It says West Golden here. This seems like an awful price to engineer, two simple intersections. I think for this price, we should get the whole thing done for this price and not just engineer. But that's the way I guess we live today. In the old days, we'd just do it for a thousand dollars.
Any other comment? If not, we'll proceed to the vote. Once again, this is a two-thirds vote for passage. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
We're going to do that again. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
I think we're going to have to do a show of hands. You're going to use your yellow card when you put your hand up, and when you do vote, please keep your hand and your card in the air until you're counted by a teller. All those in favor, please say aye by holding up your card. Okay, I believe they've counted all the yes, the ayes. Oh, I beg your pardon, I'm sorry. If you're an aye in the back, cards up. Okay, tellers, you're ready for the nay votes? Those opposed, please hold your cards up and hold them up till they're counted. If you are sitting on the right-hand side along the wall, if you are a nay vote, could
Were these just for me? Yes. Thank you. This was a little of a sunlight in it, right? That's why he passed it by.
There were, on Article Eight, line eleven, there were a hundred and thirteen yes, forty-seven no. All right, moving on to Article Nine, the regional school air conditioning. Madam Moderator. Ms. Releis.
I move that the town vote to approve the eight hundred and fifty-three thousand dollar borrowing authorized by the Dover Sherwin Regional School District Committee on March Fifth, twenty thirteen, for the purpose of paying costs of adding air conditioning to the middle school, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and provided further that the town's approval of the borrowing authorized by the district on March Fifth, twenty thirteen, shall not take effect until the town votes to exempt its share of the principal and interest of such borrowing from the limitation on total taxes imposed by the Chapter Fifty-nine, Section Twenty-one CK of the General Laws, also known as Proposition Two and a Half. And if the town does not so vote, then the borrowing authorized by the district on March Fifth, twenty eleven, and described in this vote, shall be disapproved by the town.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. I understand that the Regional School Committee has a no longer than five-minute presentation to make, and not to panic, they ask for a four-minute red card. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard Robinson, Regional School Committee. Richard Robinson, Regional School Committee, One Seventeen Mill Street, Sherwin. The middle school was built and opened in two thousand and three. It was originally designed for air conditioning, but it was removed from the plan before the building was built to save on costs. At that time, there was no adjustment to the plan and no pre-installation of pipes or ducts or other things that would prepare the building for air conditioning in the future. Since it opened, there have been ongoing complaints of heat buildup in classrooms during hot periods, especially when it's humid when there are several days in a row of hot and humid weather. Those of you not familiar with the school, it's two floors, most of the classrooms are on the second floor. There is some air conditioning, an office suite on the first floor, a computer lab on the first floor, the bio labs, and then the computer room on the second floor. It's an important question to ask what the right temperature is for learning. Studies that have been done suggest that sixty-eight degrees in fact is the ideal temperature for, for students to learn at, and that, thank you. And that learning significantly declines as the temperature goes above that. I hasten to add, though, we are not trying to get our classrooms even to sixty-eight, although that would be nice. We're trying to get to seventy-eight. I'm going to show you very quickly some temperature data. We recorded temperatures. The buildings were built with hour-by-hour temperature recording in every classroom, and we analyzed data for two thousand, two thousand and eleven, two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, focusing on May, June, and September, when typically we can expect the lowest temperatures. The data I'm going to show you is only for weekdays when school is in session, and only between seven and four P.M., when teachers are expected to be in the classroom. As you'll see, it's color-coded by temperature, from yellow to orange to red, and we do have some blacks, nineteen and above, in the classroom. You'll see some gray areas where we had some glitches in the data collection, and I cannot tell you whether those areas are warm or, whether those times are warm or cool, so we've left them out of the analysis. And there's some gaps in the early data, especially in some of the worst classrooms. For example, here's one day in two thousand and ten. As you can see, three classrooms here, where we started out at seventy-nine in some of these classrooms, and that temperature builds throughout the day. So now, I'm just going to run through rather quickly the data we collected. Two thousand and ten, mid-May, classrooms arranged here from left to right, and then individual days in this week from top to bottom. Second-floor classrooms on the left, first floors on the right. You see here in the last week of May, we have some significant hot temperatures throughout the day and throughout the week. Cools down again, there's some of that gray I was talking about. Till now, here we are in mid-June, and then finally, the last week of school. Looking at September, the opening of school, incomplete data, but we get the picture. The next week of school, we have obviously a problem. Cools off, starts to warm up, again, that gray, but by the end of that week, we have very significant problems in many of our classrooms throughout the entire day. A quick tabulation of that data will show you just from the ten second-floor classrooms, the most complete, but not necessarily the worst, data. The percent of the school year in which the temperature is at or above seventy-eight is somewhere between fifteen and twenty percent of the classrooms, average of eighteen percent throughout the year. Eighteen percent of the classrooms throughout the year, excuse me, eighteen percent of the days in those classrooms throughout the year are at or above seventy-eight. Ideal learning takes place at sixty-eight. Was two thousand and ten a fluke? These are the last six weeks, thank you. These are the last six weeks of two thousand and eleven, and the answer's now, it was not a fluke, it's the fact. Middle School Teacher Survey, what symptoms have you experienced on high-heat days? Anecdotally, there were days, one teacher said, when I was seriously thawed, I might pass out, and I'm a young, fit, healthy guy. Inability to concentrate or sluggishness, these are our teachers, and we've had similar complaints from our students. And in summary, sorry. In summary, we've got excess classroom temperatures, frequent persistent widespread, work environment's healthy, the learning environment's unhealthy. We looked at non-air conditioning alternatives. We tried some things, they didn't work. We considered many other things that won't work. We commissioned an engineering study, puts it on RFP. Our plan is for rooftop AC units, no new ductwork is required, centralized control and adjustment only within certain parameters. Quickly, those are the costs. Children's share about four hundred thousand dollars, roughly speaking. Estimated annual cost by eleven thousand. Here we are, Sherwin Town Meeting, Dover meets Monday night, and then we'll be at the ballot, I hope, on May fourteenth, for your approval of the construction this summer. No disruption to split start. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any debate about the HVAC program?
Ms. Moderator?
Yes.
I, as a selectman, we've taken a position on a variety of things. We held off on this one, but I just want to say that I pushed Richard pretty hard on exploring the alternatives that were explored. I also pushed on, I actually looked at all that data very carefully to just sort of get a sense of what percentage of the day, what percentage of classrooms, and it was quite significant. So, he's, he sold me at this stage of the game. So, thank you for your efforts, Richard.
Any further comments? Any further comments? If not, we will proceed to the vote. This is actually a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Motion passes. Article 10, Regional School Committee Capital Items.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Williams.
I move that the town vote to approve the $122,000 borrowing authorized by Dover Sherburne Regional School District Committee on March 5th, 2013, for the purpose of paying the cost of various items of capital equipment and/or improvements, including the payment of all costs of the development related thereto, and provided further that the town's approval of the borrowing authorized by the district on March 5th, 2013, shall not take effect until the town votes to exempt its share of the principal and interest of such borrowing from the limitation on total taxes imposed by the Chapter 59, Section 21 CK of the General Laws, also known as Proposition 2 and 1/2. And if the town does not so vote, then the borrowing authorized by the district on March 5th, 2013, I believe it should say, and described in this vote, shall be disapproved by the town.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. I understand there is a presentation? No longer than... Yeah, okay.
Thank you. Mike Lee, Cleveland Drive, and Regional School Committee Member from Sherburne. And Frank Hess, I think, kind of discussed briefly the activities that we took part on last year, having all of our buildings evaluated for their needs over the next 20 years. For the regional campus, just to give you a quick overview... Sorry. Okay. So it's a $40 million regional campus project was completed in 2003. At that time, we renovated the high school down to the studs, and athletic fields. We built the middle school and the wastewater treatment facility. Upgraded the auditorium through grants from the Mudge Foundation, and included minimal work to link west of the building that we're in right now, the high school gym and the middle school gyms. As you imagine, if you've gone through a renovation or a new home project, you enjoy a honeymoon period where nothing breaks and nothing needs looking after. So we're now transitioning out of that period and moving into a period where we will need to start to do renovation and that kind of projects. The report included $20 million worth of potential projects and 250 separate line items. So a colleague of mine, Dana White, from Dover, and I worked with the regional building staff to review that and the business office. Projects fall into several categories. Some of them are out of scope from funding from directly from the town, like the Fields work that was supported by the boosters. And our initial focus of the subcommittee is just items that are upcoming for need over the next several years. And today, we've already voted on the air conditioning project. We also have $122,000 of projects, of which Sherburne's share would be $56,000. Large items like replacing some failing VCT flooring, masonry repolting, lighting and walkways for high school parking, and then some other minor items. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? If not, we'll proceed to the vote. This is a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Motion passes. Article 11, Cemeteries. Ms. Moderator? Ms. Williams.
I move that no action be taken.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that no action be taken. Is there any discussion? If not, this is a simple majority. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously.
Madam Moderator.
Okay, we're getting there. Article 12, Land Easement.
I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept the gift of an easement over land located at 59 Whitney Street and part of the Whitney Farms Development for the purpose of providing access from Whitney Street to the Upper Charles Trail and for the right to park up to four motor vehicles within the easement on such terms and conditions as the Board deems to be in the best interests of the town. Second.
Ms. Moderator?
Yes, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Ms. Moderator, I have to recuse myself.
Oh, okay. Thank you. I believe there were going to be comments from the planning board? Yes.
John Higley, 14 Saddlebrook Road, Chairman of the Planning Board. This is a... An article, it's a requirement of the comprehensive permit for the Whitney Farm Development. So it's an easement that's at no cost to the town. It's a requirement for the already purchased trail grant. So that's roughly what it looks like. That... That's just another view. So this easement is... Includes parking at the emergency access of the... I'll just back it up. At the emergency access of this development, and provides access to the trail. Again, this is a requirement of the comprehensive permit for that development. And we don't have to do anything until we decide to. If there's a grant to pay for development of the easement, that's up to us. Really, the trail is a long-term... We made a decision to buy this, the parcel of land that includes this, the rail trail. It's part of a regional asset. So in trail development, you grab the pieces that fit the long-term goal. If the long-term goal is to have this trail, we've already made that decision in buying the land, then this is an easement that is a piece. We don't have to do anything, we just... It's an opportunity to have it, and again, it's a requirement. Well, I've got time, and Cory's not here, so...
Sorry. That's my punishment. Thank you. Are there any other comments on Article 12? Yes, Elliot.
I've been opposed to this bicycle trail coming into Sherburne. It's only 800 feet from Whitney Street down to the Holliston Line, and there are vernal pools on both sides of this fact. When it really rains, it's just one vernal pool. Includes the railroad as well. And I really don't see how there can be any development through that vernal pool. Conservation says maybe they can. But I'm just also wondering, what's this going to cost us in the future? This is just the beginning of expenses. I know this is just an easement they want to give us. Okay, if they want to give us, why not? But I'm afraid they're going to have a lot of expenses in the future, and I don't know how conservation can allow this trail to come into Sherburne right through this vernal pool. But that's the way things work, I guess. So what can I say? Thank you.
Can I?
Yes, there's a comment up here, and then we'll go down there. Yes, Paul.
I just want to... Is it on?
Yes.
I just want to point out that the issue before you is not whether or not there ought to be a trail. We've already acquired the trail. That's part of a grant that we had from the state, and a lot of people in many different communities came together to make that happen. We have that trail. This is about an easement that would allow for parking to access the trail. So I would suggest that the focus should be, do we want to have additional land where we could put parking, or do we want to turn that away or turn that down? But the trail is already there.
Thank you. Excuse me, yes.
Rob Wolf, 31 Saturday Hill Lane. Just wanted to make two quick points, one of which is, yes, it's only a very short section of land, but it was necessary for all the six other miles of trail within Sherburne, and then further connection from that to Milford, because it's all being turned into a trail under the Rail Banking Act, and that requires a continuous connection to existing rail line. The second point is that I believe the trail will actually be better protected in the wetlands sense as a trail than it was as a railroad. Railroads are exempted from many of the wetlands laws for when they're doing maintenance of existing facilities, whereas anything that is done to, what, change the surface, to make any improvements of the trail would go through the same process with the Concom and wetlands as any other project.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? If not, we'll proceed to the vote. This is a simple majority question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. Before we proceed to Article 13, it's been called to our attention that there was a clerical error. I love the term "scrivener's error." In Article 9, the regional school air conditioning question, that in the motion, it referred to the meeting that has... And the vote that had already been taken by the district committee on March 5th, 2011, and it should have been March 5th, 2013. If there is no objection, I will direct by consent of the meeting that we make that correction in the record. Is that agreeable?
Yes.
Good. We will move on to Article 13.
Madam Moderator?
Yes.
I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaws of Section 3.2, Schedule of Use Regulations as printed in the 2013 Town Meeting warrant.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there a report from the planning board?
The planning board met and discussed this, and was in favor of it as his advisory. The purpose here is to enable... To enable office, retail, and assisted living, as you see in your warrant. It enables it through the same process of... If development wants to do this. And initially, this was introduced for the project that's being discussed in Article 14 and 15. But this is good, smart growth approach to doing things. This enables office, retail, and assisted living through the process of a preliminary development plan, which means gets discussed, gets... There's a hearing by the planning board, there's a hearing by advisory. It comes to town meeting, just as we're going to see with the next two articles. And then it goes back if it's approved. So if, with permit, the X means it's not allowed, the P means it's permitted, and... So this would enable it, after going through the process of a planning board hearing, advisory hearing, town meeting, then it goes back to the planning board for the final plan, which has to be very, very close to the preliminary development plan. So it gets a lot of exposure and discussion. So this is good, smart growth. Enabling office and retail and assisted living in elderly and affordable zoned areas makes sense. If we think it does make sense, that it fits use in that area that's directly related and useful to elderly and affordable, let's do it. So we voted in favor of this in the planning board. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any debate regarding this motion? Yes, in the rear. Just to remind everyone, if you do want to talk about something, if you could go directly to one of the two mics, and I'll recognize you there. Be a little quicker.
Susie Wheelwright, Hunting Lane. I can see no reason to pass this at this point. It seems to me that to open doors to any sort of development without having a specific plan in mind or a specific need in mind before us makes no sense to me at all, and I urge you all to vote no.
Yes.
Jim Murphy, 44 Bear Hill Road. I see no good reason not to vote for this. For once, I think I'm on the other side of Susie. But the asterix solves Susie's problem. The asterix provides that in order to get either office, retail, or assisted living facility, you have to come up and present a complete package with all the details to town meeting. If you don't, and you don't pass a town meeting, where everybody will see your slides up on the board, it will not pass. But what it tells you is to think whether or not that is something that could work in the town. If it does, you have the right to vote for it. If you don't like it, you have the right to vote against it, and then the planning board can't pass it. They have to come here first to town meeting to get your approval before it can advance. It is smart growth planning, it's good foresight, it's something that we ought to do. Thank you.
Yes, did you want to speak in the back?
Yes, Carol McGary. I'm Chair of the Historical Commission. I just wanted to bring up the fact that the changes to the amount of retail space allowed has come up in previous town meetings in this pod, and that Historical Commission has not supported that primarily because it impacted the Whitney Paul Tavern at the center of town and the possibility of developing that, and potentially that that development, if it was large enough, might lead to the demolition of the oldest historic building in town. It's nearly 300 years old, and it has no protection through the National Register status. The homeowner can do whatever they want with that property, really. I am somewhat reassured to hear that it's going to be coming before town meeting, and so perhaps that's enough protection. But I just want to bring up for those who may or may not have been following this that that is probably the most significant and central property that would be impacted by this.
Carol, your residence, please?
262 Western Avenue.
Thank you. Yes, John.
Those are all very good points, but we're talking about changing to the schedule of use for office, retail, and assisted living facility. We're not talking about the planned unit development. So it's... Those are good things to think about, but they would regard a different article. This is not the planned unit development article. So remember her good thoughts, but they don't apply to this proposal to change the schedule of use.
Article 16, John. PUD 16.
Art... Excuse me. Did you? No. That'll come up later. Is there any other debate? If not, we'll proceed to a vote. This requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Motion passes by two-thirds. We have Article 14, Rezoning of Land.
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Siri.
I move that the town vote to grant preliminary development plan approval pursuant to Section 5.6.3 of the zoning bylaw for the rezoning of land located on North Main Street and adjoining excess Woodhaven land now owned by the town, as such land is more particularly described in the legal property descriptions on file with the town clerk, to residents EA District so as to permit the development of newly constructed over-55 housing, as well as the use of the existing structures for housing, office, retail, assisted living, or other municipal purposes as detailed in the preliminary development plan presented at town meeting, or any amendment approved at town meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We're going to... I guess we'll take the presentation first, and following the presentation, we'll have a report from the planning board. Less than five minutes.
Thank you. Jim Murphy, again, of Bear Hill Road. On behalf of Bob Murchison of Phoenix Abbey Partners, I am pleased to urge town meeting support of Article 14, seeking preliminary development plan approval to rezone the former Peace Abbey property and adjoining properties to EA zonings, in order to permit the construction of an over-55 condominium development. It is a well-suited and well-sighted project, I might say, that has gotten a lot of input and a lot of listening to many townspeople and committees, and it has, I can summarize that it'll increase the tax revenue to the town without a significant demand on the school system. It'll maintain the town's character, particularly the two historic buildings, while addressing the need for additional senior housing. It'll be complementary to the Woodhaven project nearby. It's close to downtown, the library, churches, the community center, and town offices. It's not too big, it's not too small at 18 units, and it's not going to be too cheap, and it's not going to be too expensive at $600,000. Now, the reason that we have to come to you for preliminary approval here at town meeting is because our zoning bylaws have a unique provision that requires that before we even can get to the Planning Board and ask the Planning Board for a special permit, we have to come to town meeting first to get preliminary development plan approval. And there are many things that we have to bring to town meeting, and I'm just going to race, race through to the last, one of the last slides, excuse me. And it shows you, we have to give you all these things: boundaries, topography, wetlands, proposed location, bulk, floor plans, architectural character, all in less than five minutes, I might add, and have all these other, other facts to you. So now I'll just try to show you a little bit about the plan. First, I, it just gives you a good sense of the six acres or so that will encompass the plan. You'll see that there are five new buildings of three units each, and that there'll be two of the existing building, the Dow's Library, I think finally the other building was called the Parsonage at different times. There'll be one unit in the library and two units in the Parsonage. That'll give the total of 18 units. It'll come off Village Way and into the, into the, into the Parsonage Building, and just so that you see it a little bit more closely, it'll be designed so that it'll have a loop, there'll be the, the little crosshatched area so that fire vehicles can get through. Each of the units will have a parking space, interior parking space, as well as an exterior parking space. The three-car garage is so that there'll be two, two parking spaces for the Parsonage Building and one for the Dow's Library. And just to give you a backup a little bit, just so people who might not know this property as well as I've come to know it, it's Washington and South Main Street is the split, North Main Street is actually the address, Village Way is off South Main Street. There were three parcels that were owned by the Peace Abbey. There's a four-eighth, a four-tenths acre site was the actual Dow's Library, an acre site was the Parsonage Building, and a nine-tenths of an acre of another. They then acquired 2.95 acres from George Fisk at the adjoining, George, the Clark House property, and as you'll hear more, particularly in Article 15's discussion, some additional acreage from the town. There are some statistics that you have here on how, how, how dense you can have it. For a six-acre lot, the town allows us to have 24 units, but with all of the nitrogen loaning and the DEP requirements, we're down, we could have done 19, we think, but 18 is the number that's picked, because that, that works a little bit better. The layout will show you that, you know, there's, the footprints are really compacted. It really does take the smart growth approach to planning, to put things close together, and that, the benefit of that is that you'll see there's open spaces greater than 84%, and that was really shown in one of those early slides with all the green space. Grading is going to be basically, you're going to keep the same location of those buildings, try to respect the same grade that exists there. And then utilities, gas, water, sewer, drainage, there'll be some, like the Woodhaven Project, water treatment for the, for the water. Landscaping, you know, that, again, you'll see that there's some buffering that's at least initially planned. Everything gets to even more detail at the Planning Board level. Money. Based on the $600,000 projected price, you could see an increase in tax revenue to the town of approximately $212,000. Nothing to, to sneeze at at all. This is what it'll look like. It really is going to kind of take the little, the sense of the Parsonage Building and really kind of carry that sense through it with the other three buildings, excuse me, the other five buildings, and those, the interiors. I'll tell you more about the land swap in Article 15. I urge your vote on Article 14. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jim, before you leave the mic, do you want to do an attorney disclosure?
Did I represent the?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I represent Mr. Murchison and Phoenix Abbey Partners.
Thank you. Is there any discussion about Article 14?
Over here, Madam.
Okay, oh, I beg your pardon, we were going to go, sorry, Pat, to the Planning Board for their report.
Thank you. Thank you. The Planning Board met with the developer in a lot of meetings. We did go through the process we just described with the preliminary, with the hearing for the preliminary development plan, went to advisory, and now here they are. The process that they've gone through is very, very thorough. The Planning Board supports this in part because it's adding, it's in, it's consistent with our current 2001 general plan, adding over-55 housing. It's enabling the possibility of a sidewalk in the front on, on that side of, of the road that, that is a very desirable thing, increasing the walkability of our town center. It's reducing the number of driveway entrance, exits to the main road. That's a very good thing. So it's got a lot of things that fit the goals of the, of the general plan, and it fits smart growth. It's the right thing to do to increase, to improve our town center. So we voted in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Selectmen.
The Board of Selectmen supports favorable action on this. There is a need for this type of housing in the town. It's centrally located, so it's a desirable place for, to be in our town. We want our citizens to be able to stay in this town, and as they, as they age in place, we don't want people to feel they have to sell their houses and move to other communities. We like our, our residents. We'd like them to stay here. This provides an opportunity for that. And finally, this property, for a long time, has been tax-exempt. This development is going to bring these properties back to the tax rolls, and therefore improve the financial condition of the town and all the taxpayers. So for that reason, the Board of Selectmen supports this article and requests your favorable action.
Susie, in the rear.
Susie Wheelwright, Hunting Lane. Unlike the last article, which I thought was extraordinarily broad and unnecessary, I think this is a very good, very specific plan, and I do support it.
Is there anyone else who want, wishes to speak? Yes, Elliot.
Adjacent to this project, there are Statue of Gandhi and Emily the Cow. And I don't know just who owns that property, whether this is the new owner has that property with some sort of an easement, that the statues stay, or just what? Could you say, Jim?
Yes. Elliot, would you like me to ask?
I would like you to ask him if he could tell me who owns the property that the statues arrive, because I want the statues out of there, and all of the plaques, as opposed when they put them up 20 years ago. It's very controversial, and
Elliot, I'll be happy, I'll be happy to ask the question.
At eight o'clock, don't interrupt me. At eight o'clock this morning, I was there reading the plaques about Emily, and we should all become vegetarians. I want those plaques and statues out of there.
Elliot, you're not making it easy to call on you again. Jim? Would you, would you like to answer the question?
The prop, the property is actually owned by Phoenix Abbey Partners. It does come burdened, though, with an easement to keep those statues on the property, including the plaques. There is also an easement for the benefit of the former owner for daylight access to look at the plaques, and they can also let any of you also, if you ask them, to come and look at the plaques, too. They do have some maintenance requirements with respect to that, but it was a condition of the purchase, and as Paul said, when we purchased the property, the very next day, I was glad enough to be able to deliver a check for $56,000 in back taxes to Nancy Hess. So some things you want, and some things you get. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Moderator?
Yes.
Could you ask him where the $600,000 estimated selling price has arrived at?
Yes. Mr. Murphy, could you tell us how the $600,000 estimate was arrived at?
I think what was done was, again, it's a very preliminary, it's certainly preliminary, but what was tried to do is that you try to take a canvas of what it is that sells in a, in a, in a community. So, for example, you would not think that if the average sale price of units in a community was in the $300,000 range, that you could successfully sell and market properties in the $600,000 range. But similarly, studies have shown that there is some correlation between what it is that you can sell in a community and the condominium prices. In other words, the condominium prices typically don't differ significantly from the single-family home properties. So in any event, there was also a look at the size of the units and an estimate about whether or not the square footage per square foot cost worked. And with that data, it was felt that on this preliminary basis, the 550 to 650 price range was a likely price. Then we took the average of that, 600,000, for purposes of, of creating the estimate of taxes. There's a recognition that the library unit, the library unit's significantly bigger in size, and that's likely to sell for a greater sum than the other units. The Parsonage Building is cut into two, so we have to kind of put that little consideration in. But on balance, we felt that was a fair estimate, given the data that we had gotten and the canvassing that had been done on this very early preliminary stage.
Thank you. In the rear.
Kathy Knight at 9 North Main Street, which is directly across from the Peace Abbey currently. I have several questions for Mr. Murphy, if he would. I, I don't know if I have to go through the moderator to ask those questions, or if I can ask them directly.
You can ask me, and I'll just refer to him.
First of all, nowhere on the plan did I see that there's currently a barn on the property, and I'm assuming that that would be taken down. So I'd like clarification on that point. Secondly, there's quite a bit of slope to that property, and Mr. Murphy mentioned that the current gradation would remain in place. I'm wondering how that's possible, given the overview of the new buildings that he displayed on the overhead. So those are my first two questions. I, I don't know if you want to ask him about those.
Okay, you said first two. Are there subsequent questions?
Okay, thanks. Just about the barn, oh, you're asking me if there are more questions?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I guess my most important question is, as an abutter to that property, even though there is North Main Street separating us, there's been nothing sent to abutters that I'm aware of, and I'm wondering if I, there's a plan to do so. It would be extremely helpful to the immediate community if we had some of this information had been mailed to us.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Murphy, you heard the questions? The barn, the slope.
First, thank you for the questions, because it takes my five minutes and extends it a little bit. Some of the things I wasn't able to say. The barn is going to be removed, the existing septic system would also be removed. The, the other thing that we didn't really say is that the driveway coming into the property from North Main Street is going to be eliminated, and so that's going, that's going, I think, could be a improved situation at the front. That, that is not part of the easement area for the Peace Abbey, so that has the potential to also be landscaped. The grading is, and there is one of the slides, three-to-one slopes, they allow the existing stone walls to remain undisturbed, undisturbed, and minimizes the impact on the adjacent forest. The proposed roadway is pitches from two to four degrees, and the grades around the existing structures will be preserved to the extent possible. So that, that really is the intention. When we do go to the Planning Board, we're required to give them topographies at every two feet. So we really have to go down, down to the two-feet scale of what the topography will be. But at this early stage, before you get preliminary development approval, you don't have it just that much yet, but that will become part of it. You also will have the opportunity during the Planning Board's special permit process to participate. Now, I, I do apologize if you were not one of the persons who got copies of this. We were, I know they had many open sessions in which they had Council of Aging, they went to Historical Commission, they went to Traffic Safety, went to the Planning Board, which were public meetings that were, were advertised. We also went to the advisory. We circulated the, the presentation that you've seen up there on the board by email to others. We could always do more, and we certainly will add your name to the list to make sure that you get copies of everything else, and we hope that you'll be very happy with what you see across the street.
One, one further question, Jim, if I might.
Excuse me. Kathy, could we have the, hear from the other two folks, and then you can come back?
Sure.
Thank you.
Polly Leland, Mayor, 3 Village Way. This is only a comment. I, too, as Elliot, have lived in the town a long, long time, but often on. I was not here when the Elsie and Gandhi appeared, and so I didn't have a right at that, couldn't express my opinion, but may I say, as a long-time, often-on member of Sherburne, I am so proud that all of those plaques with all of those sayings are in my hometown.
Yes, in the rear.
Carol Rubenstein, 57 Old Field Drive. I would like to know what board or committee in town is responsible for making regulations about developments to require space for trash receptacles and recycling receptacles. I ask because the over-55 housing on, next to Sunshine Farm, does not have room for recycling receptacles, and therefore those residents do not recycle at all. We just recently found this out. And I don't want this to happen at any other development in town, and so I would just like to alert the town that this needs to be taken care of, and I don't know who to direct this concern to.
Carol, I would suggest that you might want to take that up offline with David Williams, the town administrator. It's a good question, it's just not relevant to this particular motion, but thank you.
Is that all right, Dave?
Okay. Kathy, we want to come back to you. Is there anyone else that wanted to speak, first of all? Kathy?
I, just one other question for Mr. Murphy. I'm, it's pretty forested across from where I am on the Peace Abbey property, and I'm wondering how many trees are going to be lost in this process.
Did you hear the question? Yes.
I, I really, I don't, I can't say that we have done any counts. However, I do know that we anticipate, there was a landscaping plan as part of one of these slides that does show what we were intending. It does show a buffer along North Main Street as we, we designed it. However, the Planning Board does have the ability to tell us or to condition any subsequent special permit grant on us having a certain amount of trees. We're obviously trying to do the best to preserve the site. We're obviously trying to do the best to preserve the site. Woodhaven has brought to our attention that there are some special trees that have been planted there, and none of those are going to be eliminated. So, we are going to do our best to respect the site. I can tell Carol there is a recycling center on the site in one of the drawings.
Thank you. Yes, in the rear.
One last question. I'm Dan Fulmer from 49 North Main Street. Just an infrastructure question. Do you have enough land to be sure that you can take care of all the septic and the water requirements, so we can be sure that the taxpayers in the future aren't asked to build a municipal sewage system and a municipal well in order to provide for this particular development of 18 units? Thank you.
You heard the question. Okay.
It has been designed to accommodate everything, like all the other Sherburne properties, with onsite wells, onsite septic. Like the Woodhaven project, it's contemplating having three separate wells with water treatment. Each of those wells has 100-foot zone, one radius around them. The septic is up near the railroad tracks, and you'll see when we do the following article of a chance, as part of that five minutes, to point out where that will be located. There were calculations that were done, having in mind DEP. We did hire engineers at some great cost. There were some tests that were done during the testing season that showed what the flow rates were. So, we have done some of that preliminary work, because if we couldn't do wells and septic on the site, we wouldn't be up here.
Yes, in the rear.
Peter Lifford on Dopping Brook Road. I don't have a question, I just would urge this body to approve this article. I have never seen a more thoroughgoing preparation for a vote on any development in this town. This project has been vetted past every possible committee and group, received input, and responded to that input. I believe it should be approved.
Thank you. If there are no further comments, we will move to the vote. This is a zoning question, so it requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Motion passes by two-thirds. Article 15, excess land conveyance.
Madam Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Pucci.
I move that the town transfer to the Board of Selectmen for the purpose of conveying and authorize Board of Selectmen to convey a portion of the town land at Woodhaven on South Main Street. As such land is more particularly described in the preliminary development plan, followed with the town clerk, an easement over a portion of said land to permit vehicular and pedestrian access to abutting property. Said land and easements are shown on a plan entitled Plan of Proposed Land Acquisition in Sherburne, Mass., dated April 18, 2013, but only if the grantee receives a special permit from the planning board pursuant to Section 5.6.6 of the Sherburne zoning bylaw. And provided further that the Board of Selectmen's obligation to convey is contingent upon reversion of the conveyance to the town if the grantee fails to comply with the requirements of the planning board's special permit, as may be amended prior to said special permit's expiration or any extension thereof, and further to authorize Board of Selectmen to accept the conveyance of a parcel of land abutting the Woodhaven property for general municipal purposes. And the grant of an easement for sidewalks or pathways, all is shown on said plan, provided that the Board of Selectmen is authorized to convey and accept said parcels and easements approximately as shown on said plans, minor changes or deviations being authorized, so long as they are within the purposes of this article. Said conveyance is to be in compliance with the provisions of General Laws, Chapter 30B, to the extent applicable.
Second? It's been moved and seconded. I think we will do the same again. We will have the presentation, followed by the planning board report, and then we'll have discussion.
Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Five minutes.
First, thank you for Article 14. For a long period of time, the Board of Selectmen and the Advisory have said that one of the goals that should be adopted in the town is to put in or adopt policies to increase revenue without increasing expenses. The Board of Selectmen and Advisory have had a revenue enhancement committee, an ideas committee, a financial levitation committee, and now a revenue development committee. And now, we see one of the policies that we're asking to be done here. As we described before in the last article, Phoenix Partners controls 5.3 acres and it needs another .7 acres to get the six acre minimum necessary to have an EA zone. We need to get those .7 acres from the town. And what we tried to do is to see how the site worked with what we needed, and so you'll see that what has happened in this slide is that there are circles. The circles are the wells for our property, the Phoenix property, I say our, but it's Phoenix's property. And there are also circles showing on the next slide, the circles for the Woodhaven wells that have to be respected. In the top corner, at the end of the green pointer there, is where the septic system will go. Again, we need to have certain setbacks. So, really what has happened here is what we've done is we've designed wells and septic to fit with the current integrated whole of these parcels here. And then, there will also have to be an easement off of Village Way into the parcel and to the front of the driveway where the parsonage house will be. So, the green is what is coming from the town, the magenta is what's going back to the town. And I would point out that what is also going back to the town, besides the tax revenue that I talked about before, is that as part of the planning board approval, it specifically says that the town is granted an easement over the land that is not made up of housing sufficient to ensure its perpetual use as conservation, recreation, parkland, or buffer areas. So, in other words, even though we have six acres, and even though we only are going to develop 18, excuse me, approximately 18% of it with housing, 82% of it will have a veneer, an easement, saying you can't do anything more on it. And you'll see that what also happens is that we've put basically a line around the outside of the parcel that really basically says, you can't connect it to anything in the future, because you own that land. That will be the land that's owned by the town. And also, along North Main Street, we give an easement of land, and there's also some right-of-way land that the town already has, sufficient to put sidewalks or pathways. There's also, if you look at where the triangle of the green meets, it's very hard to see there, it's a dotted line of an already existing 30-foot easement that the town already has over this property that's going to be respected. So, the whole idea of this was to see whether or not there could be some integration. And then, what the town has insisted upon and we have been willing to grant is some fail safes. And what are those fail safes? Because what they don't want to have happen is, hey, you say all these great things, and then you don't build it, and this zoning exists, and now we don't get the thing that we thought we were going to get at town meeting. So, the town has put in two fail safes. The first fail safe is this reverter. In other words, if you don't do it, we, the town, get our land back. And the second fail safe is 30B. 30B is that portion of the general laws that relates to procurement, and it requires that the town have to specifically identify, in the central registry, the land proposed to be encumbered or freed from encumbrances, and that land that they're going to accept, and that land that's going to have easements on it. So, in other words, by the reverter process, by the 30B process, everything has fail safes on it, like if you don't build, you don't get. If, in fact, you do build, then we have an integrated project. 18 units here, 24 units at Woodhaven, the roadways that work, pathways that work, sidewalks, walks that work, wells that work, septic fields that work. So, again, probably less than five minutes this time. Please support Article 15.
I think I'll jump in. The planning board, same thing, the planning board spent a lot of time with the developer and held a preliminary development plan hearing, same thing, process went to advisory, and here we are. As this slide shows, it really enables a more walkable town center. It's great. It's really, it puts a sidewalk along, it enables a sidewalk along North Main that connects to the village, makes a great deal of sense to make it, to anything that moves us in the direction of making the town center more safely walkable, so you can go from the southern part of our town center, including senior housing, and be able to get to the other part of our town center safely. This is really a good conveyance configuration. There's a lot of things technically that went into this configuration of land from a water and septic point of view. From the planning board's point of view, this really enables the over-55 housing in the right place in the town, and it increases the walkability. It's really a move in the right direction for long-term where we want Sherburne to be. The planning board voted in favor of this. Please do.
Madam Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Durances.
The Board of Selectmen recommends favorable action on this article. Point out, number one, this authorizes this transaction to take place, it doesn't mandate to happen. Number two, your Board of Selectmen will make sure that all of these provisions are there to protect the town, and the paperwork will comply with what's set forth in this motion. When Attorney Murphy talked about, the town has insisted upon various things, I confess I'm the one who insisted on some of these, the reversion, the sidewalk in the front, and you have the commitment of this board that we will make sure that these things happen. But at the end of the day, this is needed to make this transaction take place. Right now, this property is not on the tax rolls that we're proposing to allow to be used. This will bring it onto the tax rolls. Your Board of Selectmen is constantly looking for new revenues and ways to limit or control expenditures, to relieve the pressure on the property taxes. This conveyance is needed to have this project work. It's an essential ingredient. So, please give us the authority to put these ingredients together and allow this project to go forward.
I'd like to mention that there has been an amendment proposed by the Board of Selectmen, and it has been accepted by Mr. Pucci as a friendly amendment, that changes the phrase "Board of Selectmen's obligation" to "Board of Selectmen's authorization." So, that will be part of the main motion on which you will be voting. Yes, Elliot, something relevant to this issue?
Peace Abbey is gone. Please get rid of the name Abbey Road and the statues and the plaques, then you'll get my vote. But now, I'll be voting no.
Any other comments? If not, we'll proceed to the vote. This is a motion that requires two-thirds for approval. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Motion passes by two-thirds. Article 16, zoning bylaw amendment, PUD.
Madam Moderator?
Yes.
I move that the town vote to amend Section 4.6.3(c) of the zoning bylaws pertaining to the planned unit development special permit provisions by deleting subsection 3 in its entirety, replacing it with the following. Subsection 3, retail outlets shall be limited as follows. Number one, one retail outlet may be allowed up to a maximum of 6,000 square feet of gross floor area. Number two, no other individual retail outlet may exceed 2,500 square feet of gross interior floor area, which area shall not include mechanical, storage, or kitchen space.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there a planning board report? You wanted to make a presentation, correct? Okay, go ahead. Five minutes.
Article 16 is for the planned unit development, which I think is, we've discussed this in the past, and our sense, the planning board, is that there's greater interest in the development of our more attractive town center, the local small grocery store, and added tax revenue. Really, this is a discussion of what's your vision over the next 30 years, what do you want the town to be like? It's really important we conserve and protect what makes Sherburne great, so this is really a decision, I really urge you to think about what we should look like in the next 30 years and how do we get there. So, this is, the PUD, and I can, I think it's appropriate to read right from the zoning bylaws. The purpose of the PUD, so think about this as you consider this article. The purpose of this section is to provide a special permit for an alternative to traditional business development that enhances the rural village atmosphere of the town center, or otherwise provides increased public benefits by permitting greater flexibility in site design, mixed uses, than is otherwise allowed by this bylaw. The intent of this zoning provision is to provide greater integration of land uses within the town center, preserve historic buildings by providing economically viable uses for them, relieve congestion by providing linked and access parking, perpetuate and enhance the appearance of Sherburne's traditional small town center, and better promote building location and overall site planning that may be possible under traditional zoning while retaining standard setbacks in other properties not part of the planned unit development. That's the introduction to what a planned unit development, that's the goal. So, try to think about this with those goals in mind, that's right in our zoning bylaw. There's features of this. The town voted for the planned unit development, we've got it, it's in our bylaw, we approved it. The only change we're talking about is changing one store, one facility, from a maximum of 2,500 square feet to 6,000. The reason is because we held, the planning board held a hearing and said, hey, the PUD we've got now, it's not been used, it's never been used. And the feedback we got at that hearing last, two February's ago, was that this 2,500 is a real obstacle, it's a real indicator that if you wanted a development in the anchor, stores gotta be 6,000 square feet or bigger, but it's gotta be, 2,500 is basically telling a developer, we don't want development. And I guess history would say that appears to be the case, that when a developer looks at Sherburne and says, you know, it's too big an obstacle. You know, a couple of years ago, we voted in favor of reducing our parking requirements to make us more welcoming to some kind of development. So, think about those terms in the long-term vision. This is in response to the same thing. If we do want development of some kind over the long term, we want a, some kind of a grocery store, for instance, that this is a change that would enable that, it's still gotta go through all the protection and process of the PUD, which is far more extensive and discretionary, meaning we can listen to everything, they can sort of fit everything that's in our bylaw, and we can still say we don't want to do this. I'll just read a section in the, in section 4.6.8, standard for issuance of a special permit. If a developer comes in and says, I want to do something, I want to put something in, under a PUD, we have got far greater control than we do in the regular business district. A special permit under this section shall be provided, shall be approved only if the requirements of section so forth, I'll just skip ahead. The proposed planned unit development meets all the requirements, that the proposed planned unit development is sufficiently advantageous to render it appropriate to grant special permission to depart from the normal requirements, and that the creation of the development according to the plan will not result in any detrimental impact to the neighborhood or the town or such development as designed due to consideration for health and safety. So, we've got a great deal of controls. When the PUD was crafted years ago, it was done to give us a lot of control, and it's a very, very good planned unit development. The only change we're proposing is- The only change we're proposing is to change one store from 2,500 to, to 6,000 square feet. So, so in this, in this, in this area, so these are the parcels that are eligible because there's a 60,000 square foot parcel size. So these are the parcels that are variable. Effectively, effectively, this is the, this is the, these are the parcels which, this parcel forty-one is already partially in business now, so there could be some development there now. So we're trying to, by adding a PUD, we actually increase a great deal of control. And the planning board voted in favor of this.
Excuse me, if, if you had a question, could you speak to the moderator, please?
Ms. Moderator?
You have a question?
I was just asking, John, cutting the lovely pictures were of the Dover Market, which is a private property there.
The, the comment was made that the pictures were of the Dover Market, which happens to be 6,000 square feet for frame of reference. Thank you.
Ms. Moderator, yes. The Board of Selectmen support this fully. We think it makes great sense for the town, long-term as well as short-term. We're behind it.
Thank you. Um, yes, I'll go back here. I'll come up to Lanny and then I'll go back.
Hi there, Steve Gaskin, fifty Old Orchard Road. I'm not against development in general, but at the Fitzpatrick residence, it's right at the nexus of the major traffic routes, and I worry about the traffic. And my question is about the payoff. How, suppose it's developed. What sort of tax income can we expect from it? And what is that as a percentage of our total tax roll?
Um, I'm assuming that we can't really nail that down on the spot, but John, do you want to try?
Well, to, to, we did some estimates, sort of based on, not specifically that parcel, but based on what kind of development could happen with water and sewer and without water. So didn't base it, we based it on using our existing PUD. So, so we didn't, we did not come up with an estimate. If I can make a convoluted answer, the pictures we showed are Dover Market, and there's a, if you know the Tullian Ivy on Bacon Street on the north side of Natick Center, that's a similar size. So it's, both of those small grocery stores are about 6,000 square feet. That's roughly the size of the existing property that includes CNO and the post office, that, that building. So it's, it depends on the development. It's, it's a wide range. The tax revenue goal for this is, is a good thing. The increased aesthetics are a good thing. I don't know how to put a value on that, but that, those are, I don't have, I don't have an estimate to give you precisely, but it, you could, we could say $100,000, $200,000 of additional tax revenue, just based on whatever configuration. There's a wide range.
Okay. So what percentage is that of the town's total tax revenue now? Maybe advisory knows?
A hundred thousand would be point four percent approximately.
How much?
Did you hear that? A hundred thousand of increased value would be approximately point four percent?
So all I'm saying is, it's nice that it looks better, and I, I'm in favor of that, but point four percent to the total tax rolls is not a lot to get for a lot of added traffic if that becomes a problem.
I, I believe the answer was point four to per hundred thousand increased.
Okay. Even so, if you have three of those, it's not much.
I just wanted to clarify that. Yes, Lanny?
Lanny Rubin, twenty-six Elliott Street. I'm not speaking as a member of the advisory board. I was the lone dissenting vote on this issue. But I would like to address the tax issue because I did call up the Dover assessors to find out what, in fact, the Dover Market pays in taxes. They pay about $16,000, which includes the liquor store and point eight acres. Now their, their tax rate is lower. The assessments are about the same in Dover and Sherburne. So using the Sherburne tax rate of 1970 against the $12 and something in Dover, it would come to about $25,000, and that is a high estimate on what this supposed market would net in terms of taxes. So the hundred thousand dollar figure is sheer fantasy. I would say this is really a major change to the complexion of the town, and there really hasn't been a town-wide consensus or a town-wide survey. I know there are those that are in favor of it, but that's far from the kind of planning that this town has done. And again, without a traffic plan in advance, that's a terrible traffic place, and we need a viable traffic plan to know what's going to actually happen and how it's going to impact the neighborhood. And we don't really know we're going to get the Dover Market, whatever the planning board says. Once we create a category, it could be a 7-Eleven rather than this perfect market which they think they're going to control, and it will be in the hands of the planning board, not so much the town, to make that decision. So I urge your vote against this.
In the rear?
Yes. Warren Willwright, run thirty-seven Hunting Lane. This is not smart growth, and a smart growth amendment for Sherburne. Expanded retail will raise your taxes, not lower them, and there will be non-monetary costs as well. Large retail involves high traffic flows. That's been mentioned. Adding to congestion. Resurrecting the pressure for North Main Street, reconfiguration similar to one that was previously shut down, quite resoundingly, a number of years ago. And if it happens, it'll result in the loss of our small New England village character. Sherburne has a history of vacancies, retail establishments. Retail knowledgeable citizens have spoken up in the past and said, this is not a good destination for large retail outfits. Our small population at 4,500 will not create a destination, nor will the rush hours. Witness the high turnover. Some are arguing for a market, but we have three major grocery stores on our borders for competition. Dover does not. Then you'll get a large vacant retail facility when it fails. Is that what you want? An open vacant? Then the 7-Eleven becomes attractive to fill in? And it leaves all approval to the planning board, not town meeting, as mentioned by Lanny. To fill a large vacant retail space, there'll be pressure to provide municipal water, municipal waste for some other type of facility in the retail. The planning board already has a smart waste study underway. What do you think it'll cost to do the waste treatment facility? The designers have already said, we don't have enough you-know-what. In the center of town, they'll have to truck in the waste. The current zoning regulations were carefully crafted to set reasonable limits, and they should remain. Twice before this has been voted down, it should be voted down for the third time. Thank you.
Yes, in the rear?
Arch Schnor, twenty-five Woodland Street, formerly of the planning board and the Conservation Commission. Like to speak against this as well, but looking at it from a little bit bigger picture. I mean, one of the main things is retaining the character of our town. I'd like to remind everybody that we, there's our town, seven surrounding towns about us, 170,000 people, we're 4,000, 4,500. So if we want to retain our character, I feel that it's important to retain this kind of control so we can get what we need down there in the center of town. And I really worry, as other people have said before, these larger facilities adversely impacting us in a number of ways. Thank you.
Uh, there's another speaker waiting in the rear. I, I'm sorry, I can't see. Have you spoken?
Okay, yes. Andy Waterback, thirty-six Brush Hill Road. I think there are two more behind me as well. It is Sherburne's deep-seated and longstanding commitment to protecting and maintaining the unique rural heritage of our town that attracted my wife and I to move to Sherburne about seven years ago from Newton. In fact, we couldn't wait to get out of Newton, with all due respect, because it had become so congested with traffic. When people come to visit us in our home in, in Sherburne and drive through the town, they frequently liken it to being in Vermont. This increasing the maximum allowable retail square footage by 250% will severely alter that unique rural heritage of our town. Sherburne really is an oasis, surrounded, as other speakers said, by ample shopping for, for us to take advantage of. The last point I'd like to make, Madam Moderator, is once a development project is approved and constructed, there truly is no going back. It is there, and my fear is that it will alter that unique rural heritage of our town forever. Thank you.
Yes, the next speaker?
Point of order, Madam Moderator?
Yes.
I think there was a correction on the percentage.
Yeah.
It was for our amusement, but I, I think it's 140% increase, not 250%.
Got that? Yes, thank you.
Carol McCarry.
Oh, Carol, I'm sorry, I couldn't see what it was. Yes, Carol.
Two sixty-two Western Avenue. I feel like I'm in that movie Groundhog Day. I'm back. But I also feel like I'm in that movie Groundhog Day because this is back. The same proposal to change the PUD. Several years ago, when the proposal was to quadruple the retail space, we saw a proposal, we saw a plan from the homeowner of forty-one North Main that showed retail space and no Whitney Paul Tavern. Now think about, just imagine driving up Route sixteen and sitting at that set of lights and not seeing that beautiful tavern there. It will be very difficult to develop that property for retail space with that tavern in sp, in place. That's why we opposed it then, and that's why we still oppose it.
Yes, in the rear?
Hi, Edie Steffig, thirteen Lake Street. I think that this would open the door to a change in the town structure to more extensive development. The Sherburne downtown is quite nice, the way it is now, as far as I'm concerned, and Sherburne does not need a grocery store. There are lots in the surrounding areas. We've done quite nicely up until now. A Donlin-type grocery store is quite expensive from my experience, and I wouldn't want to shop there. And it would compete with our farm stands, which I think are very important for our community with our rural character. I think the amount of tax revenue that we would get is a drop in the bucket, so I really oppose it.
Yes, Elliot?
I think until the town of Sherburne puts in-town water and sewerage, we have very little to offer anyone to come in here and set up a business. So if you have catered to more than 25 people a day, you become a public water supply, and requirements get very, very difficult for anyone to come into Sherburne and set up a business. They wanted to have a restaurant, we're eating apothecaries, and they couldn't because of the water situation there. So someone said he moved from Newton to Sherburne because he wanted to get away from the place. I would love to get out of Sherburne, and until I hit Powerball or sue the town, I guess I'm stuck here.
In the rear?
Dan Fromer, forty-nine North Main Street, which is the property immediately adjacent to this proposed retail store. I want to put a little historical perspective on this. When PUD was first brought up, our town planner invited me for a one-to-one conversation in his office to try to assuage my concerns about PUD, at which point he said, listen, there's no need to worry about it. Don't oppose this. I promise you, it will never be a big retail store, 2,500 square feet maximum. You don't have to worry. It'll always stay small in scale. And I guess it gets back to the saying, you can trust me, I'm from the government. Hey, 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 hey!
Excuse, excuse me, and it's inappropriate to applaud. We're not going to get into specific people.
Yes, I apologize. It's just the way it feels to me. So I'm not anti-business. I've spent a couple hundred hours over the past few months helping somebody to start a small business, which culminated in a ribbon-cutting ceremony that I spent all day yesterday at, that had the local chamber of commerce and a state rep at, at the facility. I'm just against having to live next to a shopping center, basically, and I'm mostly against being selected and almost targeted to be the one person who has to do this. I have yet to find anyone who would agree to such a development adjacent to their property. And it, it just hurts to constantly be having to fight this, whereas everyone else seems to be, seems to have special protection against such development adjacent to them. So please vote this down. Thank you.
Any other comments? Uh, yes, John, in the front.
I really first want to make, make it clear, I think we're all on the same side of the fence, which is we're having a good discussion on the same side of the fence. As I said, I think having it very clear what the vision, what your vision of Sherburne is, I think everybody's saying the same thing. And, and there's, whenever there's change, there's risk. So it's really, in my view, that if you look at this from a long-term vision of what you want for Sherburne, do you, do you want to expand a store size from twenty, one store size from 2,500 to 6,000 in order to achieve one vision, or do you not want to? And that's how you should vote, but really think long-term. So I just wanted to say a couple of things. The, the tax revenue discussion, I think is appropriate, but, but enabling development of one location enables development of, of more space that we have that's really not well-used or could be improved, which would increase the track, the taxes. So it's really not just based on one 6,000 square foot. That's not what the PUD is about anyway. It just enables development with a much more control than we already, than, that's already exists in the business district. And, and traffic has got to be a big part of, of anything that gets approved. Absolutely, it's got to be a big part of, of, any traffic plan has to be favorable to what we want. That, the, the market that we did have was very small, about the size of the PUD, and it failed. So this says, if you do want a market or something like that, that, that's evidence that it was there for quite a while, but it did fail. It's too small, perhaps that's the conclusion you might come up with. It's, another way to look at that, look at it, that, that, that water and sewer, anything that would happen under this would be bound by our current water and sewer, and that's the way it would be built. So those are, I think those are issues to keep in mind, your, your vision of, of, of what you want Sherburne to be. Anything we should, anything we do should be along that path.
Thank you, John. In the rear?
Sal Raghi, forty-six Forest Street. I'm sure there are towns out there, but I, if I'm correct, that we tax our businesses at the same rate that we tax our residential properties. I'd like to, if there's a plan to escalate that, the business component of town, I'd like the, an examination of a new tax rate for businesses, because this isn't like the Natick, Natick Town getting the infrastructure improvements from the Natick Mall. This is a different scale. Thank you.
Yes, there's someone behind you?
George Shea, nineteen Deerfield Road. I move the question.
The question has been moved. It is not amendable or debatable and requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of moving the question, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The question will move forward. This is a, we are now going back to vote on the zoning bylaw amendment for PUD, planned unit development. This requires a two-thirds vote for approval. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Um, I'm going to say that the motion fails. I'm going to say that the motion fails.
Article 17, moratorium on medical marijuana.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Williams.
I move that the town vote to amend its zoning bylaws by adding a new section 4.7, as printed in the 2013 town meeting warrant.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. I'd like to point out that Citizens' petition, Article, I'm sorry, that's the wrong, should be in the end of the handout.
Oh, okay, there's been a new motion, apparently. Nope, I'm sorry. Never mind, never mind.
It's been moved and seconded on Article 17, which is the Medical Marijuana Moratorium. I would like to point out that Article 32 is the Citizens' petition, which deals with the same issue, and I would like to take debate on both at the same time, and then I will, after we vote on this Article 17, I'll entertain a motion to take 32 out of order so that we can dispose of that immediately after this and move on. So with that said, is there someone standing in the back who wants to speak? Yes?
Yes. Hello, my name is Mimi Creer. I reside at 40 Forest Street, and I represent SPANDS, the Substance Prevention Awareness Network of Dover and Sherburne. And on behalf of the safety and well-being of our youth, SPANDS supports favorable action on Article 17.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? If not, we'll move directly to the vote. This is a two-thirds vote to pass. All those in favor, is there somebody who wants to speak on this? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion passes by two-thirds.
Ms. Moderator.
Mr. Brandon.
I move to take Article 32, Citizens' petition, out of order and consider it next.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to take Article 32, Citizens' petition, which is on the same topic, out of order. This is a two-thirds voice vote. All those in favor of taking out of order, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. I move no action be taken on 32. Second. It's been moved and seconded that no action be taken on Article 32. This is a majority question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Yes.
Passes. It's been called to my attention that we did not ask for a planning board report on the Medical Marijuana Moratorium. Do you guys have a position on medical marijuana? We've already taken the vote, it won't change anything, but if you have anything interesting to say?
No, I don't.
Oh, okay, never mind.
Nothing interesting, just, we listened to this, and we thought our moratorium was reasonable, that the legal justifications for anything else weren't reasonable, so we voted in support of the moratorium.
Okay, thank you. We're obliged to ask for the planning board report all the time. Article 18, which is the general wetlands bylaw. Madam Moderator. Ms. Wolf.
I move that the town will vote to amend the general bylaws by amending Chapter 17, general wetlands bylaw, as set forth in the handout distributed at the annual town meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. I understand that the Conservation Commission has a presentation, five minutes.
Hi, can you hear me? Oops, is this working? Michael Lesser, 54 Forest Street, and a member of the Conservation Commission. This warrant article is part of an ongoing process that began a few years ago. How's this? This is a process that began a few years ago and won't continue after this meeting. With this warrant article, as noted, we are proposing to make amendments to the town's wetlands protection bylaw in order to update it in a number of places to be conforming with the state law. As also noted, this step in the process does not expand or change the jurisdiction of the bylaw or the Conservation Commission. We have worked with town council to ensure this, as well as with a number of town residents, whose petition participation we greatly appreciate it. We also appreciate the support of the selectmen and the advisory committee. After this meeting, the Conservation Commission will be, will work on reviewing its regulations to ensure that they are in line with the bylaw through a process of public hearings. Once we have cleaned up and have consistent bylaw and regulations, we can then move to a public discussion of any changes of the scope of the bylaw protection for wetlands. The handout, we vote, most of you hopefully have a handout. The handout for this warrant article has a copy of the existing bylaw showing the changes, both additions and deletions, that are being proposed. There's also a version that was attached to the, that had these changes, but also some comments that I wrote in trying to explain each of the changes. And I and town council are here to answer any questions about these changes. I'll go over a few tidbits as a, as a bit of an overview. Some language has been added in order to conform to the language in the state law, or to clarify procedures that are set out by state law and regulations. We have always had to follow the state law and its related regulations, but adding the wording of the state law to our bylaw makes it clearer. For example, we have always had to review the impact on wildlife habitat and riverfront area, because they are both in the state act, and we are now adding them to the bylaw, changes that are in the first two paragraphs, simply to be clearer. Similarly, other changes in the first section of our bylaw note exemptions and procedures that are laid out by state law and regulations. In most cases, the changes use the same language as in the state act. In addition, we updated the enforcement section to be consistent with the town's bylaw that is also related to this. Furthermore, we also deleted some languages being outdated or unnecessary. This is the case where we dropped a section on agricultural practices that was out of date. In another place, there were lengthy descriptions and definitions that matched the state law and were dropped, and instead we have a reference that is just simply made to the state law's definitions. In some, and I can go over the changes if anybody had questions, in some, we'd appreciate your support for these amendments to our bylaw, so that without changing its jurisdiction, it's clearer and updated. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any comments or discussion?
Over here.
Yes, Paul.
The Board of Selectmen supports this and recommends favorable action. As a selectman, I believe that our laws and our bylaws should be in compliance with state law. This article cleans up the language and brings us into compliance with state law. As a lawyer, I am very much concerned that we not expose ourselves to potential claims, liability, misunderstandings, and the like that arises from a bylaw that has provisions and language that is different from state law. This will bring everything into harmony. So bottom line, I see this as necessary housekeeping. It really needs to be done, to get ourselves back where we should be with a valid, lawful, fully compliant bylaw. Therefore, we urge you to adopt this article.
Grace.
Grace Shepherd, Rockwood Street. As the first name on a Citizens' petition which resulted in Article 34, I want to say that I am in complete agreement with what the selectman Durensis just said. This is a very, very good, clean revision of our bylaw, and I do support it, and I look forward to seeing the Conservation Commission in times certain providing us with their regulations, which will be in total compliance with this now excellent bylaw.
If there are no further comments, then we will go to the vote on the motion made on Article 18. This is a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. There is also, and Grace Shepherd made the reference to it, Article 34, and, which was the same topic which she has now withdrawn support for, and I'd like to dispose of that right now, if we possibly could. So, Mr. Brandon, I'll take a motion to take 34 out of order.
I move to take Article 34, Citizens' petition, out of order and consider it next.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. This is a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. We'll move to Article 34, the Citizens' petition. Mr. Ruben.
I move that no action be taken. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that no action be taken. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. We'll move on to Article 19, the neglected buildings bylaw.
Madam Moderator.
Yes.
I move that no action be taken. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that no action be taken. Is there any debate? Yes.
I'm Robert Johnson, 272 Western Avenue, and I'm not really speaking either for or against this, but if the advisory committee's motion to take no action fails and a positive motion is put forward, then I would propose an amendment which would add, for a period of more than six months, the reason being that in case of fire, I think a pause is necessary. I'll explain that in more detail if a positive motion is made.
If there, I'm sorry, is there someone in the back who wants to speak?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Carol McGary, Western Avenue and Historical Commission. Article 19 is designed to strengthen the building inspector's ability to enforce the maintenance of severely neglected and abandoned buildings. Unlike existing state laws, which rely primarily on demolition to address severely neglected buildings, this article allows the town to require the owners repair their severely neglected buildings. However, use of this bylaw would be primarily controlled by the selectmen in coordination with the building inspector. And while the building inspector supports this, the selectmen do not. Therefore, Historical Commission recommends withdrawing the article or voting no action so that it can be considered, so it can go, undergo further consideration in the coming year, in hopes of bringing a revised article to next year's town meeting.
Thank you. If there are no further comments, we will proceed to the vote. This is a majority vote. All those in favor of taking no action, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. We come to Article 20, intersection improvements.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Siri.
I move that the town vote transfer, vote to transfer $45,000 from free cash to fund the construction of intersection improvements at the Whitney and Western Avenue intersections and Brook Street and Western, Western Avenue intersection.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion regarding this?
Ms. Moderator, I have to recuse myself.
If there, is someone approaching the mic?
Yes. Hi there, Cindy Astralski, 15 Dexter Drive. What I'd like to see done with this $45,000 is, I'd like to see it applied to police details on the road, potentially during the rush hour, so that they could run radar. That might slow traffic down on Western Ave. If people traveling down Western Ave on their way to and from work, both in the morning rush hour and the evening rush hour, know they're going to get a ticket that will, one, get a reputation for Sherburne and slowing down in Sherburne, and, two, it'll raise revenue for the town. Thank you.
Yes, in the rear.
Peter Liffen, Dumping Brook Road. I would hope that this body defeats this motion. The plan has, for what is to be done at Whitney Street, has not been really thoroughly reviewed, but for those of you who don't know, this would, this would plan on taking Whitney Street to a single lane coming onto Western Avenue whereby you could not turn right and left at the same time, but only one at a time. This would have the net effect of backing traffic off of Route 126 in Ashland. It's akin to raising the drawbridge on the moats around the town. And it has not been thoroughly reviewed, it has not been vetted. In fact, the Traffic Safety Committee is requesting a study of that just exact action before the construction is approved. This is money that's chasing good money after bad, endless tens of thousands that have been spent on Western Avenue studies, and it's totally unnecessary. Certainly, police details are far more effective in that area, and this money could well be spent elsewhere.
Elliot? Elliot?
Elliot Taylor, 30 North Main. I live on the other end of town. Having Whitney Street one lane is the same as we did at Maple Street. We have one lane coming out of Maple Street, and the reason is, if someone comes up beside you, you're wiped out, you can't see either car. So one lane, one car, you can see both ways, and I'm in favor of this Whitney Street. I've said many times, Brook Street should be a three-way stop, but I've been told many, just as many times, the state won't do it, so forget it. Well, I won't forget it, but anyway, I believe this is a DESA money that's paying for this. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
So this is not really coming out of our taxpayer money, it's thrown in free cash by, thrown into free cash by DESA for traffic control on Western Avenue, and therefore, we're just taking it back out and dumping it here. So I'm in favor of this.
In the rear.
Brad Van Brock, 127 Western Avenue, chairman of the Traffic Safety Committee. We have, as a committee, seen and have gone over the plans for the intersection redesign. The eastbound lane on Whitney Street design has not been decided upon yet, but in general, the plan that has been presented is very similar to other plans that we've reviewed over the years, and the Traffic Safety Committee believes that it's time to act on a redesign that is, that is sensible, that does not increase trafficuing. So I would ask that everybody trust that sensible design will be the outcome of this effort.
Thank you. Mr. Crawshaw.
Madam Moderator.
Sure.
Don Crawshaw, 198 Western Avenue.
Be sure to speak into the mic, please.
Don Crawshaw, 198 Western Avenue, Madam Moderator. Thank you very much for the questions that have been raised, but I'd like to remind town meeting, this project has been reviewed by town meeting in the past, in the fact that DESA's funds have been put towards the study of what to do with Western Avenue, because the original Citizens' petitions, almost 15 years ago, were very concerned about the volume of nine-car carrier traffic from DESA. And those original meetings were standing-room-only in Sherburne Traffic Safety Committee meetings, and we managed to calm the fueler down over the years by working carefully with Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen, many boards of selectmen, starting way back with Kitty Sturgis, Jim Campbell, and Paul Durensis. And we've worked with many planning boards, and we got to the point, by working with Planning Board, that DESA's special permit was issued on condition that funding would be provided for Western Avenue problems. for Western Avenue problems. And certainly, police details were tried, but police details cannot be there 24/7. So, we looked at ways of doing things more proactively, and it is apparent that the, for example, the Y intersection at Brook Street with Western Avenue, cars coming down Western Avenue aren't sure whether to go left down Western Avenue or turn off on the Y to Brook Street, so many of them end up in the stone wall, and there've been many accidents there. So, one of the benefits of this study, which was done by our consultants...five minutes? I get five.
Well, I'm sorry, when you wanted to participate in the debate, I was timing you at two. Is this your substitute presentation?
This...I would like this to be my substitute presentation.
Okay, we'll give you a couple more minutes.
Thank you very much. So, town meeting authorized funding in 2007 and 2008, and Planning Board, in issuing their permit in 2009 in July, mentioned that funding would be primarily for the Western Avenue project. And so, funding has been spent on data collection and appointing traffic engineering consultants called McMahon Associates, and they have looked at various ways of solving problems at Brook Street and Whitney Street, and has been mentioned, the similarity with Maple Street is that cars come up together, trying to go eastbound from Whitney Street onto Western Avenue, and they block each other's lines of vision. So, here we are. We have the funding which has been provided by DESA. It's existing in the town treasury. The estimate for the work is $38,000, including both intersections. With contingencies, it amounts to $45,000. That's more than covered by the DESA contributions, and we now have drawings, specifications, cost estimate from qualified engineering consultants. So, if the funding appropriation can be approved today, the next step would be to go to Board of Selectmen to get their, at a public hearing, approval to do the project. But before we do that, Sherburne Traffic Safety is going to do a test on the island that is proposed at the Whitney Street exit into Western Avenue to see that large trucks such as the fire truck can turn around the island. So, that will be done before we go to meet again with the Board of Selectmen. But at that meeting, the consultants will be there again to answer any questions. So, today, we request approval of the appropriation of the funding so that money's been spent in the past on studies and plans and designs and estimates can now be used proactively for this shovel-ready project. Thank you.
We'll take the two last comments in the back.
Neil McPherson, Great Rock Road. Just a couple of comments here. Number one, I do support going forward with the work that is being proposed, although it's not been finalized. I would say to you, though, the town needs to start looking at the bigger picture here. This is not just about Western Avenue, and the effects of DESA are not just on Western Avenue. So, as we move forward, we agree with this article, then the town needs to look at the bigger picture. The other intersections impacted, the other roads impacted. I'd also point out, the most dangerous intersections in town of Sherburne right now are not on Western Avenue, and I think that's where we should be focusing our energy and our time. Thank you.
Yes, in the rear.
George Shea, 19 Deerfield Road. Number one, I call to see if there's a quorum, and if there is a quorum, I move the question.
I would like to, before I accept a call to quorum, I would like to tell you that if the call to quorum shows that we, in fact, are below the quorum, we only have one option, and that is to adjourn the meeting to a further time and date.
That's all right with me. It seems to me that the town should have the ability to have its representation according to the bylaw.
Excuse me. And that the...it does not invalidate anything that has come up to that point, but if you still call the quorum, we will proceed with that, if that's what you want to do.
Call quorum.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I believe a number of people have stepped away to get lunch. This is one something.
Then we should take no action.
And people are...a number of people told me they're leaving and they're planning to come back, and the moderator announced that there was not going to be a lunch break, and some of our residents felt that they were hungry. And it seems a little unfair, in the middle of the lunchtime, to call a quorum that might have the effect of ending this day's meeting before people have a chance to come back from their lunch break.
I'm sorry that people are hungry, but so am I. I call for a quorum.
Okay. Okay, I guess the tellers are going to count the quorum. If you could please stay in your seats.
Dave, does anybody outside?
Sure. If there...I think...
Do you have yellow cards because we have non-voters even on the stage?
Yeah, why don't you hold up your yellow cards because we have some non-voters present? And if someone was standing who's walking across the back would like to call in, anyone who may be in the cafeteria?
Call one out when you need that.
Okay. You're right here.
I'm Dave.
Yeah, we don't want to lose your power here.
Judy, are we counted?
I feel like one of us must work out there.
Judy, are we counted?
I'm betting you do.
There were some people behind the curtain, too.
He's a wizard.
Couple of dozen.
Wednesday, maybe.
There were some people behind the curtain, too.
He's about 20.
He's a wizard.
Couple of dozen.
Yeah, yeah.
So, we like 10:30.
You should go to 11:00.
Yeah, but we lose people.
Yes.
You don't want to scare people.
I think maybe that, more than...
I don't know how many years ago it was that we stopped making a return service.
Some chocolates.
Keep it down.
Not us.
It turns out that we have 118 people here, so we do have a quorum. So, I believe George's next comment was that he wanted to call the question.
Thank you, Madam.
I beg your pardon?
I said, "Thank you."
Oh, okay. Calling the question?
Yes, I do. Call the question.
Yes, is not debatable, not amendable. Two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Oh. Let's try that again. All those in favor of calling the question, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
I'm going with two-thirds. We're going to vote. Yes. We're going to vote on Article 20, the intersection improvements. The motion has been made. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
It's...let's do that again. It is a majority. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it. Motion passes. Okay, Article 21, the Personnel Administration Plan.
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Pucci.
I move that the town vote to amend the Personnel Administration Plan by amending paragraph four of section 12, FMLA and service member family leaves of absence. By deleting the sentence, Appendix C contains any explanation of the notice requirements when an employee seeks FMLA leave.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? If not, let's move to the vote. It's a simple majority. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Oh. Let's try that again. All those in favor of calling the question, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
I'm going with two-thirds. We're going to vote. Yes. We're going to vote on Article 20, the intersection improvements. The motion has been made. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
It's...let's do that again. It is a majority. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it. Motion passes. Okay, Article 21, the Personnel Administration Plan. Madam Moderator? Mr. Pucci.
I move that the town vote to amend the Personnel Administration Plan by amending paragraph four of section 12, FMLA and service member family leaves of absence. By deleting the sentence, Appendix C contains any explanation of the notice requirements when an employee seeks FMLA leave.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? If not, let's move to the vote. It's a simple majority. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Article 22, the Personnel Administration Plan, Appendix A.
Madam Moderator?
Ms. Relles.
I move that the town vote to amend the Personnel Administration Plan, Appendix A, titled Positions Within Job Classifieds. By adding the position of lieutenant to exempt position job classification to.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? If there is no discussion, this is a vote of a simple majority to pass. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. Article 23, and I think probably I will speak at this point, that Article 23, 24, 25, 26, 33, and...I'm sorry, I can't find my notes. 23, 24, 25, 26, 33, and 35 all address the same general issue, and they will all begin with a negative motion. We will vote on them separately, but I would ask that we debate them together. I'll accept a motion on Article 23.
Madam Moderator?
Yes.
I move that no action be taken.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that no action be taken. I know we have a presentation from Selectman Caruso, five minutes.
Yes, while I'm setting up before the meeting starts, so I'll just say it's beautiful...isn't Sherburne beautiful right now this time of year?
Not for me.
And that must be why we love it so. I'll also say, I get weather reports on my phone, and the latest report is, we're actually experiencing a squall out there. It's very cold, windy, and raw, so enjoy yourself in here. This is the better place to be. All right, so I'm here to talk about Article 23 and 24, 25, and 26. If you look in my little booklet here, the warrant, I've actually crossed out 24, 25, and 26, just so there's no question. And in fact, the Board of Selectmen voted to support Advisory's no action on those articles. So, rather than confuse you, I'll just keep my thoughts as an educational opportunity here which the moderator has generated to Article 23. Key thing here to note is, it's not the people we're talking about, it's the boxes on the organization chart. I was fortunate to be a guest target, I mean, guest speaker at the COA Breakfast with the Selectmen last week, and one lovely lady asked me, "Well, what's the problem? What's broken?" And I said, "Well, you know, actually, I'm not saying things are broken. Sherburne's a wonderful place, and it works very well, and we've got great people." But a couple of things, from my perspective as a selectman, I have to do things. We have a lot of responsibility over things from which we have no authority and we have no people accountable to us, but we have to make decisions, sign on the dotted line." So, that was one area that I described that bothered me a bit. And the other area is, as a resident, I happen to be in a butter to the Whitney Farms, and I recently wrote a nasty gram, a nasty letter to the town, you know, objecting to certain actions that were being taken over there, and I wrote it to whom it may concern. And I said, "I don't know who the heck to send this to." So, that's part of where I'm at. And then I happened to come across this next slide, and I'll read through some of it. I sent it to David Williams, our new town administrator, saying, "Does that resonate with you? What's the problem?" Well, "To whom does one turn in town for answer to a compelling question or problem? Issues and problems seem to slip between the overlapping boards and departments. There's the general sense of frustration at the seeming inefficiency and paralysis of the towns not having a person and power to initiate actions and follow through on their completion," which is what I've seen as a butter at Whitney Farms. "Today, Sherburne requires more professional coordination and management to help ensure that plans and projects are carried out and their tax dollars are widely spent, and that there's a need for long-range planning to maintain the quality of life that characterizes Sherburne as a desirable community to live and raise our families." Well, where I got those words, which seemed to, in many cases, apply today, was from the 1985 Annual Report, when I first moved into town. And here we are, talking about some of the same issues. Many of these slides that you see, and I have like 12 seconds apiece for them that I'm going to go through here, I've already done it advisory public hearing, so you may have seen or heard them, and I apologize for too much redonancy. I won't dwell on them. But one of the things, back in 2009, Advisory wrote a letter to the town boards and committees saying the town should carefully review its organizational charts and job descriptions, and we recommend engaging the DOR at its earliest opportunity. Well, it took a few tries. It took actually an article, a citizens petition, to get the board of selectmen to request the DOR to come in, do their study, and they did a terrific study. Advisory recommended favorable action. Advisory came in, I mean, DOR, Mass. DOR came in, did this study, which has been on the website. Hopefully, many of you have had a chance to look at it. And from my perspective, it's one of the best pieces of work from a government entity I've ever seen. I was pretty impressed by it. Anyway, a couple of recommendations, it said, "Codify strong administrator through a special act, and clarify the relationship of the town administrator to the Board of Selectmen." They also said, "Merge and appoint the treasurer and tax collector." So, what are Article 23, which actually, I think there were handouts at the front showing you exactly which 23 the selectmen finally revised to at the second night of Advisory's public hearing. I'm not here to ask you, and it also mentions, to make this happen, you have to overturn what Advisory's recommendation of no action. We're not here to ask you to do that, but we did want to set the record straight. This is what we think, and our best guess, does a lot of what the things are in the DOR report. Here's a DOR organizational chart, which again is on the website. We also engaged, the prior board, before I got involved, engaged the Collins Center. Collins Center came in. We should report. That is also on the website, also makes great reading. Talks about a variety of things where the town can improve how it does its business. One of the things says, "Stronger town administrator. Change the structure and convert elected to appointed. Go, start now, go slowly, and grandfather those people in." Well, all of that is to move to municipal best practices. Other towns do it. Residents, in my view, will be better served. There's greater accountability by all to all, and it gets us, the Board of Selectmen, out of the day-to-day minutia, which I think a lot of people would appreciate. Lastly, it saves dollars. It helps resolve the issue that I have with the chain of command. That thing's going up already? I have four articles I'm dealing with, though. Anyway, there's a variety of things you can see here, and that's my four-minute warning. Thank you. And benefits and so forth. Where I want to get to, there's...the article does deal with the recommendations of the DOR. Section two talks about the treasurer and tax collector from elected employees to appointed employees. DOR, page 12, Collins, page 13. Section three talks about strong town administrator. But what are we going to do about that? Well, here's where we're at. Board of Selectmen's consideration next steps. We're not going to push for the approval of the latest Article 23 today.
Peter, you've got an extra 30 seconds because you're a selectman, but you've got to wrap it up.
Thank you. I'm going to do it right here. This is my last slide. We're not going to push for some portion of Article 23.[1781.12] Section three talks about strong town administrator. But what are we gonna do about that? Well, here's where we're at. Board of Selectmen's consideration next steps. We're not gonna push for the late, approval of the latest Article 23 today.
Peter, you've got an extra 30 seconds, 'cause you're a selectman, but you gotta wrap it up.
Thank you, I'm gonna do it right here. This is my last slide. We're not gonna push for some portion of Article 23 today. We're gonna support Advisory's no action. We do, yes. We're gonna have the town administrator evaluate the structure inefficiencies and possible improvements that could be obtained in the town. Yes. We're gonna bring back, next town meeting, some sort of version of what you're seeing in Article 23 after more discourse. We know that there's more that's required for that. And we're gonna evaluate the need for having a task force or committee to go out and make the determination of what the right recommendations for Sherburne are from the DOR and Collins Center report.
Thank you, Peter.
That's all we're gonna do. Thank you. Changes isn't easy, but it can be good.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, and I also had a request for another presentation from Nancy Hess.
I don't have a PowerPoint, and I'm not as amusing as Peter, but I think, and I didn't learn until today that Selectmen decided to support the Advisory motion, so I apologize if some of this is repetition, but I think this is part of the educational process as well, and that these points are important. Any proposal this important should be designed so the broader population has a chance to weigh in at the ballot box. This one is not designed that way. The Department of Revenue suggested taking the time, and they use the word "years" necessary to have a government study committee made up of citizens to get a broader involvement, have hearings, thoroughly vet, and have a strategic plan for implementing any suggested changes. The Department of Revenue referred to some recommendations as routine, and said they do not know Sherburne like we do. The push has been all about how we implement what the selectmen have chosen, not what the town chooses to implement. They are just recommendations. The reports had a lot to say about fixing the selectmen's role first, even suggested increasing the number of the board, codifying a job description for the TA, delegating authority that has belonged to the selectmen to the TA, and protecting him in his job when he exercises that authority. Much of what is proposed here does not need to be legislated by the state, unless, as Town Council said, you want to do it all at once. No matter how pretty you paint it, it is a consolidation of power, and that power ultimately goes to the board of selectmen. It takes authority away from your officers, but it also takes it away from you, because it takes away your right to vote to elect those officers. Honesty is the most important attribute for people handling your money. The rest of the job can be learned. Who knows better than those who share a small community, a school, or a church, if the character of a person is worthy of that trust? Will the day come when we can't find that person in our own community? Perhaps, but it is not today. And if you combine these positions and make them full-time, you will be forced to make them appointed rather than elected, because no one could actually live in Sherburne on what we pay. We can address problems without turning the town into a dictatorship. The selectmen do need to know where the appropriate places are to send people with questions. Wrong answers can have serious consequences, but restructuring the finance departments won't accomplish that. I agree with Peter that with responsibility should go authority. By law, I accept a personal liability every time I accept a commitment from the assessors to collect money for, for this town. I, if I cause you to lose the right to collect any of those millions, my bond can be called, and my personal assets can be taken. I want to have the authority over that responsibility with only the law telling me what and how to do it. I am acutely aware of the ownership. Who is in the boxes does matter, especially if there are fewer boxes in control at the top. Incompetence at the top can affect every level. Independent officers elected by the people can survive incompetence at the top, and makes it a little less important as to who is in the boxes. State statute provides protection against being stuck with a real incompetent as a financial officer. Everybody else is not doing it. Just a little over half of the cities and towns have changed for a variety of reasons. But we should not get into the everybody else is doing it mentality, nor should we jump on the latest trend or fad. We haven't seen a blueprint for Sherburne, or exactly how the needs within the jobs that are done now will be covered in the new structure. Anyone can stand up and claim that great savings will be realized. Some towns have entire departments to deal with some of the functions, such as human resources and technology, that are folded into the responsibilities of our existing offices. It is fairly easy to tear something apart, not so easy to put it back. This proposal does not protect the incumbents. We need to decide if we need a full-time government, or want fewer people, less personal government, more mechanized government. There are trade-offs, and these have not been explored or vetted. One big trade-off is fraud mitigation. The more people in the segregation of duties, the less risk. If only a couple of people are doing all the functions, you need more oversight. At what cost? All is very nicely separated as we are now structured. Focus on fixing your finance department is misplaced. It is a well-functioning entity which represents less than 2% of the budget, and does an excellent, an excellent job evidenced by your AAA bond rating, another clean auditor's report, and today's state-of-the-town finance address. Our new town administrator has not had time to test his relationship with the board of selectmen. We are not ready for this. Please support Advisory's motion to take no action. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim Campbell?
Yes.
I rise to, not to take, to try to defeat the Advisory Committee motion to take no action, because I think, in fact, as others have said, uh, it's a process we're going through, and we're not quite ready. But I do think that the concept, as opposed to the substance of Article 23, this, this town meeting should, should recognize the concept is a significant one, and we, as a town meeting, should be taking up this issue, as opposed to deferring it indefinitely. I think that, as we've all seen, the 1% raise, the annual squeeze on our town government, uh, annual budget, isn't going to stop, and how long can we go on this way? What we've heard from both the DOR and the Collins Report is there is a more efficient way to run our town government, and that we should be, for the sake of our town employees that are here, as well as the taxpayers, uh, and in the interest of good government, we should be pursuing the recommendations of these reports, as opposed to taking no action. Thank you.
Yes.
One question?
Yes.
Um, is it possible?
Excuse me, could you?
Oh. George A., 19 Deerfield Road, Sherburne, Massachusetts, 01770, 1481. What would the procedure be to, uh, follow if I wished to modify the current motion so as to require the study committee, implementation committee, by whatever name it might be named, um, to be partially appointed by the moderator?
Um, the, the motion that is currently on the floor is a motion to take no action.
Right.
Um, and if you want to, one of the options that is available, and it falls in the same category of an amendment, is to move that this question be referred to a study committee. And if you want to make that kind of motion, it is advised that you, if this is an ad hoc committee, that you say so. If it's going to go to an existing committee, you say so. That you identify the appointing authority, if it's an ad hoc committee, that you identify the sort of general topic, doesn't have to be a specific charge, and that you probably should discuss the size in your motion, and you should also have a report back function in it, to where and when. And if anybody wants to make such a motion, we would take it up before the main motion, because it has the same status as an amendment.
So, now would be the time to do that?
If you want to, yes, this would be the time.
Then I make the following motion.
You need to write it down?
I have.
Oh, okay.
You need to give it to the?
You need to give it to the town clerk. Do you only have one copy?
May I read the motion for George, Madam Moderator, Jim Campbell, 212 Farm Road?
Um, then you're making the motion.
Okay.
[laughing].
That, that the town moderator, after consultation with the board of selectmen, appoint a task force of five registered voters to recommend changes to the town bylaws, dealing with the governance, dealing with governance, after considering the recommendations in the DOR and Collins Reports. Preferably, each of the task force members will have competency slash experience in one of the, or more of the following areas, organizational structures, finance, and human resources. Further, that the task force report, task force, report back to town, to the town within nine months. Such report to include draft warrant articles for the town to consider at a subsequent town meeting.
Do you have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion about the, um, motion to refer to committee?
Did I relinquish the floor? Or can I speak now?
Relinquish the floor?
Did I?
Oh, um, well, no, you did. Do you wanna speak to this motion?
Yes, I do.
Okay. You have your time.
George A., 19 Deerfield Road, Sherburne, Massachusetts, 01770, 1481. It is very clear to me that the process that was used to arrive at all of the, uh, articles under discussion was fraught with ambiguity and afterthought. And it appears to me that it's in the best interest of the town that a representative town meeting, and I don't intend to call for a quorum, I'll take full advantage of a long and careful study of all of the issues, and all of the alternatives, alternatives that could be used to solve whatever issues arise, and I would therefore urge you to vote affirmatively for the motion. By amending, motion on the amendment.
I, I'm sorry, you mean the amendment, not the motion?
Okay.
Yeah, well, the motion to refer.
The amendment, motion to amend.
Motion to refer.
Motion to refer. Grace, did I see you standing up? Did you wanna speak?
[inaudible].
Oh, okay.
Well, Jim Campbell again. I'll be very brief. I think if you read the report of the Advisory Committee on this article, they're basically doing everything but saying, "Let's go forward and study this further." And I think this town meeting can take a simple and non-binding step to authorize this task force, and by next year at this time, have something to really debate.
No. Um, if there are no further points for discussion, we will proceed to vote on the... Yes, Robert.
Uh, it's unclear to me who is appointing these various people.
The moderator.
That would be me. I, I thought I was gonna be off until next year, 10 minutes. Okay, all those... Oh, there is somebody over there who wants to speak. Yes. We are, right now, this is a single vote, on the motion to refer to a study committee. That's all. Okay. That, that's all we're voting on right now. If it fails, we will continue with the vote on the initial motion. If it succeeds, it will supersede that motion, and we'll go on to the next article. You haven't missed Article 33. Okay.
I'm sorry, Madam Moderator?
Yes.
I had a question.
Yes.
That might be for counsel, and I don't mean to put her on the spot if, if... Town meeting is not subject to the open meeting law. I'd sort of say that as a premise, um, per the AG. Would the committee that is being proposed in the motion, since it's being then appointed by the moderator outside of town meeting, would that committee be subject to the open meeting law?
I would presume so. Yes. Yes, that's a yes. Yes. Okay, does everybody understand what we're voting for? Did I hear it? No?
[inaudible].
I'll explain it one more time. The motion that's on the floor at the moment is to refer, to create an ad hoc study committee that would take a look at the restructuring of town government, and that would have five members appointed by me, and that they would, in consultation with the board of selectmen, and that there would, the search for members would be looking...
Yes, I can say that.
I'll read it again. That the town moderator, after consultation with the board of selectmen, appoint a task force of five registered voters to recommend changes to the town bylaws, dealing with governance, after considering the recommendations in the DOR and Collins Reports. Preferably, each of the task force members will have competency, experience in one or more of the following areas, organizational structures, finance, and human resources. Further, that the task force report back to the town within nine months. Such report to include draft warrant articles for the town to consider at a subsequent town meeting. That's what we're voting on. Everybody got that? Okay, this is gonna be a simple majority. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Motion passes.
Do we... Madam Moderator?
That then makes, uh, supersedes the motion that was on the floor of Article 23, and we will now move on to Article 24, and I hope we disposed of the debate. We were trying to debate everything in that original package, but if anybody has anything else they'd like to say, go ahead. Is there a motion for 24?
Um, Madam Moderator?
Ms. Wolf?
I move that no action be taken.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that no action be taken. Is there anything new on the discussion? If not, let's move to a voice vote. This is a simple majority. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to Article 25, changes to office of treasurer and tax collector.
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Rubin?
I move that no action be taken.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded that no action be taken. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Motion passes. Article 26, general bylaw amendment, treasurer, collector.
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Rudin?
I move that no action be taken.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that no action be taken. Is there any debate? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Passes unanimously.
Madam Moderator?
Yes.
Article 27. I move that no action be taken.
Um, didn't we just do Article 24?
Yeah, but didn't you wanna move these out of order?
Move 26.
We just did 26, did we?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And what I'm going to do is entertain a motion for 33 and 36 to be taken out of order.
Madam Moderator?
Yes.
I move to take Articles 33 and 35, citizen's petition, out of order and consider them next.
Um, it's 36, I believe, or is it 35? No, it's 35. 33 and 35, out of order. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to take 33 and 35, which also deal with these issues, out of order. This is a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. Is there a motion on Article 33?
I move that no action be taken. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that no action be taken. Yes.
I just wanted to address Article 33. That was my petition, and it was changing my name, my title, from tax collector to collector, because as a tax collector, I am only allowed to collect things committed to me from, by the assessors, and one of the recommendations from the Department of Revenue was that we try to centralize some of our collections. Well, the only choice was the law that is cited in your warrant article there, and the law, um, says that the tax collector, under the title of collector, shall collect all funds due the town. And I didn't want to have to jump into all the funds at once, and I knew that we... And I didn't want to have to jump into all the funds at once, and I knew that we would want to pick and choose some. So I spent a great deal of time talking to the Department of Revenue, how we could do that here, and put this together after conversations with them. The law says "shall," and we have a multitude of lawyers in town that can tell you "shall" has its own problems in law. So I brought this up with the Department of Revenue, and they said, in fact, the gentleman I was dealing with went to the enforcement agency because there is no city or town in Massachusetts where the collector collects all of the town's funds. And he went to the enforcement people. They said they do not enforce that. It's a flawed law. I suggest that they fix it, and they said they didn't have an interest in fixing it. So when I brought it to the hearing, it did get hung up on that little technicality of "shall." So I am supporting the no action recommendation of advisory at this point in time because the law is not self-actuating, but if someone were upset with it and called the DOR, we would have a problem for everybody. What I am trying to do is I am trying to initiate legislation to take that nasty little word out of there and have something like "has the authority to" or whatever so that we can get out of some of the individual offices the burden of collecting money that should come through a centralized office. So I suggest you go ahead and support this recommendation by advisory. Thank you.
If there are no further comments, we'll proceed to... Oh, yes, I comment.
I was a former town clerk of Sherburne, and I served this town for 21 years. I see some problems with this, and I honestly don't believe that the tax collector should be the town collector. For instance, and I'll give you an example, being in the town clerk's office, we also collected fees for dogs. Now, what do we do? We have duplication of effort. I collect the fees, and I represent, I register the dogs, all right? And then those that people that haven't registered are supposed to be called the clerk. It's a duplication of effort, and I don't believe that the town tax collector should be the town collector. Just from that one example, it's duplication of effort.
Thank you. If there's no further discussion, there's a motion that no action be taken. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. And we're... I'll accept a motion on Article 35.
Madam Moderator?
Yes.
I move that no action be taken.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that no action be taken on Article 35, which was the citizens' petition about the town administrator. If there is no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. Bless you. Article 27 is a special act for a recall bylaw. There is also a citizens' petition on the same subject, and I hope that we will take the debate together as a piece and then vote on them back to back. Is there a motion on Article 27?
Madam Moderator?
Yes.
I move that no action be taken on Article 27.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that no action be taken on Article 27. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Is... I will accept a motion to take out of order.
Madam Moderator?
Yes.
I move to take Article 36, citizens' petition, out of order and consider it next.
It's been moved and seconded to take Article 36 out of order. It is also on the recall subject. This is a two-thirds voice vote. All those in favor of taking 36 out of order, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. I'll accept an article on, a motion on Article 36.
Madam Moderator?
Yes.
I move that no action be taken.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that no action be taken. If there was no further debate, all those in favor of taking no action, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Article 28, recertification.
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Siri?
I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Assessors to undertake a revaluation of the town's real and personal property for the purpose of receiving recertification approval from the Department of Revenue, to employ experts to assist them in such a revaluation, and to enter into service contracts on behalf of the town with such experts, and to transfer $12,000 from free cash to cover any costs associated with the revaluation.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any debate? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. Article 29, the stabilization fund.
Madam Moderator?
Yes.
I move that the town vote to transfer $79,000 from free cash for the purpose of increasing the stabilization fund.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oh, excuse me. That's a two-thirds voice vote. Let's try it again. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. By two-thirds. Article 30, the OPEB stabilization fund.
Madam Moderator?
Yes.
I move that no action be taken.
It's been moved and seconded that no action be taken. Is there any discussion? Was there a question in the rear? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. Article 31, free cash.
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Williams?
I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash in the treasury $95,670 to meet the appropriations for the ensuing fiscal year and authorize the assessors to use said sum in fixing the tax rate.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to make the transfer of free cash. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. I was transfixed. We hit the end. I would be willing to accept a motion to dissolve this annual meeting.
Madam Moderator?
Oh, just a moment. Yes, sir?
Before we adjourn, I want to express on behalf of the Board of Selectmen our thanks to the moderator for an excellent meeting, and to the advisory for all the hard work they've done. And thank you all for coming.
Thank you. All in favor of dissolving?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously.